...from the regulations in the zoning ordinance, conditional use permits, and appeals from the decision of the staff and the administration of the zoning ordinance and to make decisions in such matters. This is an open and informal meeting and is currently being recorded. The board members have received a copy of the agenda, staff report, and recommendations. Copies of those are available in the trays by the door on my far left. We're gonna have at least six members on those, five members on the board. Was Jake still gonna be here?
Yeah.
He'll be a little late, okay. I'll introduce him as well. Starting on my far right, we're gonna have Cindy Smith. Next to her is Charisse Mortis. On my far left will be Jake Christiansen. Next to him will be Mel Pins. Next to him is Linda Westergaard. My name's Bill Gray. Representing City Legal today, we have Larry McDowell. Representing City Staff, we have Bert Dross, City Planner, Eric Lundey, City Planner, and I didn't see Sue Ann, is she, nope, Sue Ann's not here, okay. The board is required to base its, oh, let me go one thing. The, our, let me get this out here. The board, this is a new ad here, folks. The board members of this commission are citizens of the city, appointed by the City Council. The board members are voluntary by nature and they receive no payment or compensation for their services, so we're just citizens just like you. The board is required to base its decision in each case upon the criteria established type of relief sought by the applicant. The law applicable to each case will bring support. If the fact by the board, determined by the board demonstrate that the criteria established by law for grandular relief have been satisfied, then the board must grant the relief. Otherwise, the board must deny the relief. All speakers are requested to focus their comments upon those facts that demonstrate whether or not the criteria established by law have been satisfied. Each appeal will be announced in order and the staff will present a brief explanation of the appeal. Any written comments received by the staff prior to the hearing will be distributed to the board or otherwise identified. All speakers are requested to speak from the podium over here on my right and to begin their presentation by giving both their name and address. The applicant or representative of the applicant is allowed to speak first and will be allowed 10 minutes to present their appeal. Anyone else present in support of the appeal will then be allowed five minutes each to present his or her comments. Anyone present in opposition to the appeal will then be allowed five minutes each to present his or her comments. The applicant then will be allowed three minutes for rebuttal or other closing comments. The meeting will then be closed to public comment and the board will deliberate the request and make a decision. If your appeal is approved, we ask that you wait until tomorrow to go to the Permit and Development Center to apply for any building permits. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda will not be individually discussed and will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report unless an individual present or a member of the board requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda and separately considered under the public hearing agenda. The decisions of this board can only be appealed to the Polk County District Court. If you believe you have been harmed by an error made by this board, your only remedy is to seek relief through the district court within 30 days of the filing of the board's decision and order. If you believe the zoning regulations applied by this board are wrong, you may petition the City Council to change those regulations. All material written or otherwise used today as part of any presentation will become a permanent part of the record and will not be returned. If you have cell phones out there, we ask you to turn them off or at least put them on vibrate, they tend to be very disruptive to the process. We probably are gonna have a long agenda today, so we'll be taking a short break around the 3:00 or 3:30 timeframe. As I mentioned, we have a consent agenda, and Bert, you have one change that you'd like to identify?
I'd like to make two changes.
Two, all right, thank you.
Item number four, the appeal at 1422 DeWolfe Street, has been withdrawn from the agenda, so we will not be hearing that item today. And then we also have items continued to this meeting back in June for Michael Cortez on Southeast 14th Street. That was in June specifically to this meeting, it's since withdrawn as requested.
Oh, okay.
Will not be considered that today. But then item number 2019, and then two will be going to appeal between, from the City of Des Moines Parks Department and Drake University for both, both houses, the first or along South One River and Prospect Park, we feel like to be moving consent agenda if the board is comfortable with that.
Okay. First of all, I'm gonna go repeat what Eric just said. If you're here to talk about item four and item nine, eight, this has got a blank on it now, the Cortez, we're not gonna be hearing those cases, so you're free to leave if you're here to represent those two. Item 19, which is a conditional use and permit and variance at the vicinity of 1225 Prospect Park or Prospect Road, is, is there anybody here to speak against that item? Okay, hearing none, I'll look for a motion to move that to the consent.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to move item 19 to the consent agenda for approval.
It's moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Motion carries, six to nothing. That leaves us with the following items on the consent agenda. Item one is amend a special permit at 1300 Havens Avenue. Item two is an exception at 1549 22nd Street. Item three is an exception at 1720 Forest. Item five is an exception at 4812 Lakeview Drive. Item six is a special permit at 3700 Cottage Grove. Item seven is an exception at 1206 Loomis. Item eight is an exception at 32943rd Street. And just as I said, item 19 is a conditional use permits and variance in the vicinity of 1225 Prospect Road. Is there anybody here present that is here to speak against any of those items? Yes. Item one?
Yes.
Okay. Item one, we'll move to the public hearing agenda then. Anybody else here to speak against any of those other items? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda, which include the variances, exceptions, special permits, and conditional use permits requested on items two, three, five, six, seven, eight, and 19.
They're here to second?
Second.
They're moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Motion carries six to nothing. So if you're here for any of those items that we just read off, they've been approved, you're welcome to sit around and watch your government at work, or you can go home and enjoy the rest of the afternoon. Thank you all very much.
If you could mention those numbers one more time, I couldn't quite hear.
Pardon me, why not?
Just what numbers were there, I couldn't quite hear what numbers you were moving.
Okay, item two, three, five, six, seven, eight, and 19. And then in addition to those, item four and item pound sign, eight and a half, have been withdrawn, so we're not gonna be hearing them at all. That help? Okay, good. Okay, we'll go to the public hearing agenda. First is item one.
Mr. Chair, I think there's a question back there.
I'm sorry, yeah?
Will you be hearing item number 20 today?
Yes, absolutely. Be a while, but we'll be hearing it. Item one is amend the special permit at 1300 Havens.
This is a, if you look in your staff report, I've done sort of a small survey or history of the development of this site under the special permitting process, but it's had a number of amendments over the years, starting, I think, in 1974, from its original approval. In this instance, we're, it's under consideration for a new building that would house accessible restrooms, a classroom, and space that would be available for umpires to use in between games and, so, you know, during the month, it would serve as a classroom for their coach, for coaches and players and so forth, or meeting space for the organization, for example, but then it would also be like kind of a dressing room, kind of place where umpires could go in between games. And then the other space within the building would be used for storage. So it's kind of a multipurpose building. They already have, and it might be hard to see from the aerial because of the hashing, but there's a concession building already in this location. There's another storage building that was one of the older, original, that was approved under one of the amendments that would go away, and then in this location would be where the proposed building would go. This is showing you from Havens Avenue looking to the southwest near the concession stand. This probably shows you better, looking toward the southeast a little bit, in the area that the building would go, right in this, kind of in the mid-ground here. You see this building that would go away. And then I also have a shot looking kind of at the western part of the site towards the south from Havens as well, at the area that. One of the questions over the years was getting that parking area paved with a surface that was dustless, and I wanted to point out that they've followed through with that condition, which was kind of a point of contention in previous board considerations. The other thing I should point out as well is that this does not include anything regarding usage of some what I would call temporary parking, which has been sort of constructed on adjoining property to the east. The club has been advised that they are not able to use that at this point in time, they would have to come back with a separate request in order to be able to use that for overflow parking. It actually would involve consent of another property owner as well, to be able to go through that. So at this time, we wanted to be clear in the staff report that this doesn't, this is giving no allowance for that to be used in the future until they would come back with that request for consideration. I'm gonna pass the cards around here, and then I'll show you the set up quickly. And throughout the years, I think this has been a little contentious with the neighborhood, immediate neighborhood, in terms of the impacts that these types of uses create when they're in the residential areas. Staff is supportive of the request. We do want to ensure that it meets the conditions of providing all applicable building and fire codes with, and site plan regulations with issuance of the permit and approval of the site plan by the Permit and Development Center. Any applicant would have to provide a amended request in order to use the parking to the east, so we wanted to clearly point out in this decision, in order if it's approved, that that parking is not part of the usage granted. And then we wanted the catch-all provision that would allow the board to reconsider this item if there was any aspect of the use that constituted a nuisance or a detrimental impact on the surrounding area, so we put that in as a condition. Are there any questions?
Questions? Thanks, Eric.
I do have the, I'll let the applicant kind of explain the project, but I also, if you need to, I have the plans that were submitted that would show the building itself.
Applicant or representative of the applicant?
Hi, my name is Kenny Link. I reside at 615 North Fifth Street in Carlisle, Iowa. I'm here today to ask for the special permit to build a building that was introduced to you this morning by this gentleman back here. I am the president of the league down there, so I'm here to represent South One Girl Softball. First off, I'd like to start off with, thanks for giving us the time to have an opportunity to build this building. This is something that we have needed for a long, long time. We have, and the picture that you had seen in our concession stand is where our restroom facilities are at this time. We have two small restroom facilities that sit in the back of our concession stand, which shrinks our concession stand a little or nothing up front to provide concessions for the patrons that come down and visit our ballpark and the kids that play there and whatnot. The stools are set up on an old sewer system. The water lines to the concession stand are set up on the old galvanized type water lines, which our water pressure is absolutely zilch. So when we get a line of parents or a line of kids waiting to use, and the women's side more than the men's side, using restroom facilities, our stools won't even flush fast enough to refill for the next person to use them, because our water pressure is that bad going toward the concession stand. It only has two stalls in each of the bathrooms, and we find ourselves with lines of 10 to 15 people standing outside. And the new building that we're proposing to build would run adjacent with our concession stand, side by side. The roof lines would meet identically the same, not one being higher than the other one. And that was part of the big thing about putting something in new down there at the ball fields, was we didn't get anything higher than what we have already established down there. So when I talked to the contractor and the design guy that drew up the prints for us, I said that our roof lines have to meet. It's a very nice building. I don't know if you've seen the plans of it or not. It's an, it's a up-to-grade, up-to-state type building with handicap accessibility. Another thing that we don't have down there in our restrooms right now is a handicap accessibility. So what we're finding ourselves having to do all the time is rent handicap kibos, having them hauled in and out on a weekly basis, which is a great expense to us to do that, but our whole thing down there was to provide handicap accessibility, so anybody that wanted to come watch their grandchildren that were in wheelchairs could get to anywhere in the ballpark and have access to anything that they needed to have access to down there. We've worked very hard on that, we've come a long way on that in the last 10 years. Other than our restroom facilities right now, we have acquired that aspect of what we was after, was being able to get handicap people wherever they needed to go into the ballpark. Building this building isn't enlarging the park by no means. It, we have four ball fields down there that we operate with. We're not putting in no new ball fields, so we're not gonna add no new congestion of traffic down there. I mean, what the traffic has been down there is what it's gonna be down there. It's not gonna change because we're putting in a new restroom building. The restroom building will have five stalls in the women's, it'll have five stalls in the men's. In the women's, there'll be a dressing area in the back so that the girls can go in and change in and out of their uniforms. Sometimes the parents are late getting the kids there, they didn't have a chance to get their kids in the ball uniform, so we're finding kids out in the parking lot changing their clothes. This would give them an access to go into a back room behind the restroom facility, behind a curtain, and change their clothes. In the middle of the building would be a meeting room. It would be set up for classrooms, for coaches to be able to take their kids in there and go over, over certain things about the aspects of girls' fast pitch softball. It also gives us an opportunity to have somewhere for umpires to change out of their street clothes into their ball equipment, because they require a lot of equipment when they umpire fast pitch softball. Gear all the way in and out. So it gives them somewhere privately to go in and change in and out, and also stay out of the public eye, and they're not out and having to hang out right in the middle of the whole crowd. On the other end of the building is to give us...
About one minute, if you can finish it up.
Okay, on the other end of the building is to give us a new garage facility for the gentleman that takes care to put all of our garden equipment away, our lawn mowers, our tractors, and access, just a nicer, little bit bigger unit down there with a better water supply. That's what we're after and that's what we're asking for. I hope that you guys would consider it, given that we've crossed all the lines that we've needed to cross up to this point, paid all the dollars that we needed to pay to get to this point. So I thank you on your consideration of the new building, and that's what it's for and...
Any questions?
No questions. Staff is recommending approval for this item, but they've got some conditions there, which would include that, that you've gotta stop using the illegal parking on the property to the east. So how would you plan to stop parking there until you're able?
Put a deadbolt lock on the gate that enters that parking lot.
Okay, 'cause there is a gate for that area as well, okay.
Move the deadbolt out lock.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Is there anybody else here to speak in support? Anybody here to speak in opposition?
I live at 7508 Southwest 14th Street, which is directly across the street from the ball field, okay? I am one of the...
You're the house in red?
I'm sorry, do what?
On the map, you're the house in red?
No, I'm the one right here.
Okay, all right.
I don't know what the house in red or green is, but I am below the one in green, right on the corner.
All right.
A lot of my neighbors could not make it today, and they have asked me to speak for them. I have their written names here with their addresses and everything else. That's the rest of the whole thing. The first thing I would like to point out is, you know, this, this particular map is a little misleading. It appears to have a road running south off of Southwest 14th Street there. That road's not there, okay? The only way in or out of this facility is you either come down 12th, 13th, or 14th. And 13th Street is worn out. The rebar is showing through the concrete because of the excess traffic that's been there over the years. It needs to be repaired very badly. If you go down there and look at it, it's, it's just in real bad shape, okay? There is a number of things, you know, I'm sure that everybody has figured out, I'm going to be keen on parking. And the facilities that are around there, and the fact that all of the people on the ballpark, can I use this overhead? All the people on the ballpark are parking all over our grass, okay, in the yards. This is a private home that these two cars are on, and they are there because a member of the staff, which was driving a little four-wheeled Gator, went around to the front and realized that there was nobody at home, and he drove out here and was directing the cars, "Park here." And he was giving it one of this to tell them to park in parallel, okay? We watched that. The neighbors watched it. It's just totally unacceptable with the amount of traffic that is involved there now. How would you like trying to drive down through that? That is ridiculous. I have been through several of the zoning commissions and everything else, and through all the Polk County zoning laws and the municipal codes for Des Moines, trying to figure out exactly what the off-sea, off-street parking regulations are, okay? Not being a lawyer, these things are a little hard for me to understand. But I think if somebody would sit down and look at the facility requirements of a ballpark, an outside ballpark, it states in there that you have to provide one off-place parking spot for every four people that are gonna use the field. When you measure the seats, 24 inches is considered one seat. Every four seats, you have to have one parking spot. They have 90 parking spots off-bays that are paved, and you can't allow, you know, you can't count dirt parks because they have to be paved and they have to be marked to be considered a spot. They have 90, they should have 116 for one game to be in progress. They don't have enough parking out there now, and we're living with this. Yes, the neighbors are upset. And plus, you know, he's wanting to increase the concession stand, I can't even go down there and buy a hot dog. Neither can my neighbors. They won't let us.
Any questions?
I, Mr. Chair, I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
Mr. Murray, you've had some problems with illegal parking, it looks like. Have you talked to the police department about that, or when you see this, have you called them to have them come out and cite those cars?
I have been talking to the police department for almost three years. They're finally getting tired enough that they're starting to write tickets.
Good, okay.
Okay, this year, there was a number of tickets written. In the first two years, no, there was nothing done.
Okay, all right. And with your concerns about the condition of Southwest 13th, have you talked to Public Works about a plan to resurface that street or make improvements?
Until we can get the, the amount of traffic off of it that's there now, I don't think there's a whole lot that can be done about it. I have not gone to Public Works with it yet, but it is my next step, and it will be done this winter. I've got the pictures that I need to put a presentation together to give them.
Right. Even if the ballpark was not there today, now, or it stopped tomorrow, your street sounds like it's in bad shape, and the city should look at doing something for maintenance or replacement. I'd encourage you to call Public Works, talk to them about that.
There's one spot on the north end of 13th, just south of Amos a little bit.
Sure.
There is a spike sticking up out of the road approximately that far.
Okay.
Whenever I cross it with my truck, I don't, I don't worry about it, because I've got a one-ton dually. When I cross it with my wife's car, I go around that spot, because I'm afraid it's gonna rip the bottom out of the pan of my car.
Right, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Is there anybody else here to speak in opposition? Mr. Link, you got, you got three minutes to close it, or...
Thank you. This ballpark has been there since 1973. This gentleman bought his house two years ago, three years ago, knowing that there was a ballpark across the street from his house. We have not gained in size, we have not lessened in size since 1973. We run on an average of 300 to 350 kids a season down there. We, we let in our ballpark over 60 free kids due to the financial burdens of their families that can't afford to play softball. We have kids in the neighborhood, and the amount of 20 different kids that come down to our park help pick up garbage and stuff to get free treats from our concession stand. Anybody in our neighborhood is fully welcome to come to our ballpark. The reason this gentleman was not asked to come to our ballpark is because every time that we have events down there, he comes out of his house, he screams at our kids, he's, he's threatened to call the cops on our kids, he's threatened parents that park... Now, I'm not disagreeing whether you're supposed to park legally or illegally if you see a sign on the street, that's nothing to do with us. We can't stand out there and tell each and every person what they're supposed to do and what they're not supposed to do when they see a street sign, that's up to them. And if they get a ticket, that's their burden. We understand that. We don't have a ton of space down there, but what little space we have to operate, we're very friendly with our neighbors. He had complained about the picture that he showed you where there was two cars parked on the side of the, the road. Because of his complaints about that, we had put up a caution yellow, clear up to the asphalt, to prevent anybody from parking in it. We have been over sideways to try and be friendly with this guy, and we have, yes, asked him, please, don't come into our ballpark, due to the fact that someday, we're worried that the way he acts and the arguments that he brings with everybody is there's gonna be a feud down there someday. We don't want that in our ballpark, number one. We don't want it to happen at all. We definitely don't want it in our ballpark in front of our kids. We work down there on a sole, volunteer basis, on a board situation, our coaches are all volunteer. We put in probably 20 to 30 hours a week of our free time to go down there and make that facility nice and clean, operatable, and give children some place to come and learn the education of girls' fast pitch softball, and also to educate them on the aspects of being able to go out into the real world and meet the workforce when it's time for them to do that. We do that with regulations, we do that with rules, we do that with meetings, we do that with teamwork, and, and our goals down there is not to interrupt anybody in the neighborhood. We've been down there since 1973. This is the first complaint out of any neighbor that we've ever had down there for anything.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just, just to wrap up here, a couple of follow-up questions. Could you just tell us very, very briefly, what months of the year do you use the field, or like how many games a week, or how many, what nights you...
We operate, we operate from the, the middle of the month of, of April.
Okay.
And we wind down, our last tournament that we have down there is on Halloween, would be the last week of October. Those are the months in which we operate.
So about six months out of the year?
Correct.
Okay, and then are you mostly, are you weeknights, weekends, does it vary?
We are, we, we probably utilize seven to eight weekends a year in that six months for tournaments, and we have our games on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday night, Wednesday night if we need it for rainouts, no Friday nights.
Okay, all right. And one final question. You gave a good description of the building, how you wanna use it. If you were allowed to construct this building, is it gonna increase the amount of events you have or the amount of people coming? It'll just make that more efficient for you?
We have four fields, and we're only capable of supplying so many games for the facility. We're not enlarging our, our facility at all.
So it shouldn't increase the amount of traffic you have now?
And this has no, this building has no tie-in with our concession stand whatsoever.
Got it, okay.
It's completely separate.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep.
Any last questions for staff? Hearing none, we'll close the public portion and go to board decision. Kinda quiet here.
Well...
And well, the only thing I'll point out is, you know, I'm listening to Mr. Murray, but the only thing we're charged with making a decision on is the concession stand. Doesn't have anything to do with parking. As Eric pointed out, we, we can't do anything on the parking, so it's just a concession stand, folks, so...
Mr. Chair, I would point out, you can do anything, you can cover what's within the special permitted use as a whole within this property that was noticed. The reason I indicated you couldn't consider the parking adding that to the use is because it was on a separately owned property that wasn't within the notice area, and they didn't propose in their applications. in their applications.
Well, this has been here a long time, and when I still look at the radius map, I wish people would have sent cards in if they were concerned. I appreciate Mr. Murray's comments, but I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing the concerns being presented here. I think the ballpark could maybe do a little bit more to try to work on those game nights for the parking. I'm not sure what y'all can do, but I think this will enhance what's going on there. It fits in very well. We're not after variances or exceptions here. We're just amending an existing permit, and I don't see how it really changes the scope of what we previously approved here, form or function. I think it'd be an asset.
And, you know, I'm concerned with the parking issues, and maybe the softball organization can maybe talk to the parents and ask them to carpool, or instead of everybody bringing a separate car, since there are some issues with parking, people are going to spread out onto the street. You know, it's a good, healthy thing for children to have. It's a beautiful ballfield, and it's been there, like you mentioned, a lot of years. I'd like to see it continue, and it's just best if there can be some harmony with the neighbors and the facilities there. So if there's something that you can do to encourage parents and spectators to carpool, maybe park further away, walk a little ways, that sort of thing, instead of just imposing on just that real little area there.
We can govern that a little bit with a couple extra volunteers during our events.
Mm-hmm, yep.
All right. Do you hear a motion, then?
I'd like to move staff. I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Those in favor, raise your hands, say aye. Motion carries six to nothing. You're good. Item passed eight and a half, makes it nine. Item nine is continued from the August 28th meeting. We grant a home occupation for 32108 East A Street, 3102 East A Street, if I can get it out. And we've got changes on that.
Yeah, yeah, I'll go over that. Mr. Chair, members of the board, yeah, this, the board did take action on this appeal last month. They granted the home occupation to allow a gun sales business to operate out of the house. The board put a number of conditions on it. After the decision and order was finalized, the applicant sent it to the ATF to get the federal firearms license. At that time, the ATF agent called me and said that the condition that prohibits customer traffic on the premises actually prohibits them from issuing the FFL license, the firearms license. So I did some research on the previous case, and I did find something I knew that should have been brought to the board's attention last month that I was not aware of. So, as you recall, last month, the board granted this home occupation. They put these seven conditions on it. You've messed with the lighting. Change the...
I'm trying to, it keeps changing every time I change it.
Thanks, sir. A few, a couple of these conditions included like no parcel deliveries of firearms to the premises that are related to the business, and then number five, there should be no customer traffic onsite. So, as you remember, last month, I testified that these were the same conditions put on another home occupation, and I knew for a fact that guy did have the FFL, so I assumed that they would, you know, work for this guy as well. Here's Wayne Whitfield's conditions. You can see, it had the same seven conditions. He had an eighth that the decision order be brought back to the board for ratification, but the first seven conditions are identical to what was put on Mr. Ross at this time. However, following the board's approval of this other home occupation at 415-59th Street, Mr. Whitfield did file an appeal in Polk County District Court, District Court, and the city ended up settling out of court with Mr. Whitfield. But at that time, they reached this settlement and mutual release and covenant not to sue, which revised, you know, needed to zoom out a little bit.
Zoom out.
Yeah. So these are the conditions that the city legal department and Mr. Whitfield agreed upon following that board's approval. So, really, seven, eight, and nine, I'm sorry, seven and eight are the two conditions that deal with no, or with prohibiting customers. Instead of saying no customers shall come to the property, it now said, a person picking up a firearms after the completion of a background check shall only come to the property between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. by appointment, and all customers coming to the property to deliver or pick up firearms for repair or service shall only come to the property between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 o'clock p.m. by appointment. So, at this time, staff does recommend that the conditions for Mr. Ross be revised so that it's more in line with this settlement I just prepared or presented to you. So, as such, it would appear like this. We would strike the condition number five that said there should be no customer, or no customer traffic onsite, as all sales shall be conducted via phone, internet, communications, and or catalog. We would propose that be replaced with A, B, and C. A being all sales shall be conducted via the phone, internet, or catalog. B, firearms ordered for or by a third party shall only remain on the property and safely, and safely stored for a reasonable time in order to accomplish the required background check. And C, that the customer shall only come to the property after that background check between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. And then D, the customer, a customer delivering or picking up a firearm for repair or service shall only come to the property between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. by appointment. So, that is our recommendation, that it be revised as such. I do know that Mr. Ross was going to ask that condition number four also be removed, which prohibits parcel deliveries of firearms to the premises. As mentioned last month, we feel that it's more appropriate for him to secure like a box at FedEx or some other place where these firearms could be delivered for him to pick up at that location, and that would just prevent any guns from being delivered to his premises and being left on the doorstep for anybody to take. Just show you some photos. Here's a picture of the house. And then, this is the accessory structure where he originally wanted to have the home occupation take place in. One of the conditions the board had put on last month was that he could not use the garage for his home occupation, that all business activity had to take place within the house. Here are some other photos showing the condition of the garage. And talking with the applicant after the hearing last time, he said that the inside of this building is still reinforced. So, I told him to bring pictures to prove that, if he wanted to make that case to the board, but here's some more photos. Here's the consent map, and the cards for this are going around. We sent out new notices two weeks ago, and we put it back on the agenda. And then, here's the consent map from last month, and I'll pass those cards around as well.
So Bert, is the, and I put it against this last month because I was opposed to it.
Yes.
Is, is what was voted on last month just thrown out? That's, it's starting all over?
Well, no, it's still enforced, but we visited the city legal after the ATF had brought the new information to us, and Mike Keller, or the city legal's advice was that it be put back on an agenda just to give the board the opportunity to maybe appeal the conditions if they so choose.
Okay.
Just clarify this. Special permit grant last is in effect, but for practical purposes, it sounds like it can't really be used due to the federal requirements.
On the example that you gave us on 59th Street, and I know we've had a couple of them, was 59th the one that was kind of in a commercial area? It was...
It was next door to a commercial district.
It was next door to like a law firm, or was...
Right.
And that person's argument was, yeah, I'm in a residential area, but there's really not a lot of residential houses around. Is that...
Well, there were still several houses across the street and to the north. But you're right, they backed up to a parking lot. There's a parking lot to the east, and then there was the commercial building to the south, yeah.
Okay. And this is totally residential.
Bert, to your knowledge, with Mr. Whitfield over in Waterbury on 59th Street, was there also a condition still in effect that limited him from receiving delivery of firearms by, you know, package?
Yeah.
At his location?
In this, I guess, they call it settlement, mutual release and covenant not to sue, yeah, the number five was no firearms ordered shall be delivered to the property by parcel delivery.
Parcel delivery or mail, okay. But if Mr. Ross wants to make a deal with a gun wholesaler or at a gun show, and then have an individual bring him inventory when he's there, directly one-to-one, that's okay.
Yeah.
What you're trying to get away from is, although you have to have a live signature to receive a firearm by mail, and, you know, there could be the opportunity, while the guy's busy with his schedule, he chucks it off and leaves it on the step anyway.
Exactly.
And that's what you're trying to prevent.
Correct.
And that's what Mr. Whitfield has to comply with
Yeah.
Over on the west side of town now.
I believe he had a FedEx box or UPS box that he was able to use.
Okay, okay. Yeah, but potentially, that's just a small amount of the firearms that he might deal with in his business that would be delivered by package anyway.
Right.
Okay. I can ask Mr. Ross that directly.
He's only selling one or two guns a month anyway, so.
Okay, thank you.
And Bert, on 5B, I just want to make sure, you're leaving us open here by saying that the property can be stored for a reasonable amount of time. You haven't put a time limit on it. Mel, I think, wasn't a background check about seven days?
Yes, yes, it is. So what you're basically saying, if he wants to have some inventory, he can't keep it very long?
No, if ordered by, for, or by a third party, 5B. So he's taking a gun for somebody and having it on-premise while he runs the background check.
For a reasonable time, right.
Yeah, so I guess when I'm...
Seven day, right, yeah.
And he's saying five days is the background check now, so. Do we want to, I mean, do we want to put something in there to say?
I don't want to make it super tight, but I don't want to make it too liberal, maybe 30? Because what if the person's out of town? Hey, I got, I got approved. I'm on vacation for two weeks. I'll pick it up when I get back. How about if he has a 30-day?
I just don't want to leave it open.
Right.
A reasonable amount of time can be interpreted by a lot of people, so.
Yeah, to me, I think it would be less than 30 days.
The applicant still has a chance to speak, so.
Sure, sure. Yes, thank you, Bert.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Thanks, Bert. Applicant, represent the applicant?
Pretty much done at all, so.
I like hearing that, too, okay. Anybody else here to speak in support? Is there anybody here to speak in opposition? Any last questions for staff?
Yeah, I just, I'd just like, can I ask Mr. Ross a question? Have you had any conversations with any of your neighbors regarding this?
The ones that are directly around me know I've got guns and I deal with guns. But like the ones on that one picture where they were actually across, oh, was it Wright Street? And then on the other side of that, I don't know them, from Adam.
Okay, sure. You know, we've gotten cards on a number of people in your neighborhood that are concerned. You're obviously aware of that. So I guess I'm asking you, are you, you know, willing to take full responsibility for all of these, you know, stipulations, and to be really, exercise due diligence, and to represent, you know, yourself and your business well, within your neighborhood?
Right.
Okay.
No, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
Like I said, I've been dealing with guns out of that house alone almost 30 years.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
And Mr. Ross, you understand that you still aren't allowed to use that accessory structure. You'd have to do all your, your gun-related matters and storage within the home itself, correct?
Okay.
That's because the staff is, we're still sticking with what we had last month, which is you can't basically use the garage, so.
Right. To store them or just work on them?
I don't believe it can be used for anything related to your firearms business. No inventory...
Because they'll be in, they'll be in pieces when they go out to the garage.
Well, can we have staff clarify? I believe our intent was not, because that's just another reason for somebody to try to break into your garage. If they break into your house, they're going to have to deal with you directly, I guess. If they break into your garage, you may not know it.
Yeah, just to clarify, our recommendation had condition number six remaining. All business operations on the premises shall be conducted within the confines of the single-family dwelling.
Yeah. Okay, and I'm generally supportive of Mr. Ross, you know, what he's doing here, but I just want to make sure he understands that, so there's no unintended consequence here. And we've got guns or gun parts, or ammunition, or some other stuff out in that garage. If it's been targeted for vandalism, and if it looks like, you know, it could be something, somebody could kick in, no offense, but it kind of does, I think it'd be a good target for that. And I want to prevent that to help you as well.
Right. Yeah, I think, I think we're just trying to help you recognize that you need to be, you know, prepared to follow this to the letter. We're doing that to protect you and your neighborhood. And that, your neighborhood is showing some signs of pressure.
I just want to state that I have some concerns that this has been going on for 30 years, and we're just learning about it now. That concerns me.
Just to clarify, he's been selling used guns, which have a different set of regulations. He's now wanting to sell new guns, which he needs.
Thanks for clarifying that.
Thanks for checking, Sandy.
Yeah, and an individual, I think, can sell a gun to another individual, but there's some other stipulations, so. So he's, I think he's beyond the right track to do it legally. I'd propose make a motion to approve staff recommendations for approval of the special permit, subject to revising number 5B. Firearms ordered by the third party shall only remain on the property safely stored for no more than 30 days in order to accomplish the required background check.
Any other with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
They probably wouldn't read that along with it.
Sure.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Those in favor, raise your hands, say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries five to one. You're back in business, I guess. Item 10, carried over from the August 28th meeting, is a special permit and variance in the vicinity of 1111 East Army Post Road.
Number 11, or 10, is a request from DMAC to display three banner signs on their property. They would do, or on the South Ridge Mall property, they would do so for 14 days at the start of each of the spring, summer, and fall class sessions. Pass the comment cards around. The, as you know, DMAC recently moved into the former J.C. Penney Building within South Ridge Mall. They are now wanting to display those three signs, two along East Army Post, and then one along Southeast 14th Street, and I'll have pictures of those shortly shown now. These are the banners that were up. Properties within the city are allowed to get a sign permit for temporary signage, such as a banner, just for one event per year. I believe that's limited to a one, 10-day period per year. In this instance, DMAC wants to have them for three 14-day periods per year, so they need the special permit and the variance to do so. Here's the sign that was along Southeast 14th Street. One of the other ones along East Army Post. And then here's the consent map. We just had the cards come back in support. If you remember, last month, the applicant had requested a continuance prior to the board even hearing it. At that time, staff had been recommending denial. We felt that it would be more appropriate for them to construct a permanent sign that matches the South Ridge sign scheme. If you've noticed, they recently updated their signs to a nice, attractive, unified theme throughout the mall property.
A good picture.
I was going to say a reading.
Sorry to tease you.
In talking with Rick Carpenter with DMAC after the last meeting, he said they would really like to do that, but there's just no money at this time to do permanent signage, so they're wanting to have these temporary signs for a five-year period. So, staff kind of wanted to meet in the middle, so we changed our recommendation to just be approval but limited to a three-year period. So, at the end of three years, they could either request a similar special permit or come in for a special permit to do permanent signage. So, that's our recommendation, just approval subject to a three-year period. Any questions?
I have one question, Bert. Do you know, you know, their main campus out in Acne, did they put these banners up out there? Do you know?
I don't know. I know if, there are other campuses in Des Moines, like on 7th Street, they would be allowed... be allowed one ten-day period per year. I don't believe they've applied for anything other than that.
Mel, that's right in your bag.
Yes, yes, it is.
Can you read the sign?
Yeah, yeah, no, I can't read it from my house, no. But I can see some of those moving billboards out on Army Post. Bert, do you have any requirement that any signage material, like, you know, support posts or stanchions, that they're removed as well when the sign is not up?
I believe they would have to be.
As part of it, or?
Once the banner's found, then it'd be considered.
Or if we made a minor comment to that, could that be added into the recommendation?
Yeah, you could make that a condition.
Okay. I've seen a very large home improvement store chain in the metro, they'll put out a temporary sign, and then they leave the green stakes in the ground till there's like five or six of them sitting there, which looks rather silly, but I won't say who.
There we go. Any other questions for staff? Thanks, Bert. Applicant, represent the applicant?
Rick Carpenter, Des Moines Area Community College, 5616 Arbor Lake Drive. I guess the best way to start this out is like the movie Field of Dreams, if you build it, they will come, right? Des Moines Area Community College, I had the privilege to be on this conversation about four years ago with your mayor and your city councilman and some whole county supervisors about moving from Southwest Ninth Success Center over to where it currently is located, 1111 East Army Post Road. As you know, DMAC, we invested thirteen million dollars into this facility. It was the old J.C. Penney's building, and about two million dollars in equipment. It's a beautiful facility. What we're trying to do, and let me give you a little bit of background, what we do at that operation, sometimes what we do at DMAC is very ambiguous. But what we do at the DMAC South Ridge, we have continuing ed. We offer that, we move that program from the Ankeny campus down. Continuing ed, we offer soft skills training, welding training, some of those short-term certificates. The other program that we moved down from the Ankeny campus is DBR, DMAC's Business Resources. We go out and do partnerships with John Deere Vermeer. Then also, I operate the credit courses. We offer about eighty-five, ninety credit courses there. You can get your associative arts degree on the south side of Des Moines. Then also, we have our career academy courses, where we had a contract with the superintendents of Warren County. Currently, we have about two hundred and forty high school students that come from all the Warren County schools and also Valley and Walke. And then also, we offer ESL and GED district-wide. With our ESL and our GED populations in Des Moines, we serve about eighty-three hundred students district-wide. Those programs are federally funded. So we're going back to that. We built this facility in seven months, and I know that the signs that you see there, we have a marketing department in Ankeny campus that are professionally designed. And yes, we put those signs and those banners the same dimensions, the three-foot by twelve-foot at our other campuses at Newton, Perry, Ames, Urban Campus, as you mentioned, on Seventh Street, and also, and also in Carroll, Iowa, as well. We moved in in the first part of August. We're trying to get the news out, trying to get the word out. So we were able to take those signs that they use at the other campuses and we put them up. The one, one of the pictures that you saw there was on the block post. The wind was blowing, it was kind of a quick thing. We did our permit, we paid for our permit to get up as quickly as possible. What we're asking, we do enrollment fall, spring, and summer. We're looking for some ways, some type, to get this message out. This is a win-win situation for all of us. I've talked to the partners, I've talked to Target, I've talked to Hy-Vee, I've talked to Brian, the manager at Hy-Vee. We're all in this together to revitalize the south side of Des Moines. What better way? We're not just an anchor. We own the facility there, so we're not like the anchor stores. We own that, that piece of property. If we bring the students there, hopefully they're going to shop at Target, hopefully they're going to go and eat at Hy-Vee, and they're going to get their groceries. We know that there's another store coming in, hopefully due to the fact that that information he passes out, we're going to try to get about five thousand students utilizing at one time that was a dying art on the south side. That's why we're there. Going back to the post that Mr. Penns mentioned, we've taken our post down. We're not that operation. I encourage you to come over and look. I mean, we spent, you know, fifteen million dollars. And when we do something, that's the nicest DMAC, I can say that, of our seven different locations that we have in Area 11. It's phenomenal, it's state-of-the-art. We're not going to put post up and not take them down. We had the yard signs up, like you see that Target puts out. If we've got to take them down, we're going to take them down. But we're trying to get students in that area, last-minute chance. When I said about the federal programs that we run, we run ESL and GED. You know, those are federally funded. We don't charge them anything. We're trying to revitalize that south side. We're trying to get them in, offer that education. We also, I also operate the Gateway to College program, getting those students in that area to offer that free education. So I guess at this time, if you have any questions for me, I'd be more than happy to address them.
I just have one. I know you might, but very appropriate time, since I'm getting ready to pay my property taxes. I see there's a nice levy for DMAC on there, and I just want to thank you for being a good steward of our money, so.
And I do want to go back, I did, I did forget something. We are in the process of working with Shive Hattery, our architect firm, of putting a sign up on the Southeast Fifth location by our main west entrance. We also are in the process of looking at, if you recall, on the top of that building, there was a J.C. Penney sign at the top of that facility. We're looking at putting a DMAC logo up there as well. Now, are you going to be able to see it?
Application, though.
No, I'm just letting you know about the signage and the money aspect.
But Rick may be back to see us.
That's what I like to see.
That's correct.
Yes.
But our ultimate goal is to have some nice signage up there. But in our contract, in our CAM agreement, we do not have the ability to put where you see Target, where you see some of the other chain stores in there, that was not in our agreement in our CAM.
Cindy?
I guess my question was, you already answered part of it, but you plan to put some signage on Southeast Fifth and another place? So when that happens, then would you quit putting these banner signs out, or would you still want to put the banner signs out? So the cities, they're recommending approval of the special permit and variance for a three-year period. So after three years, do you plan on putting permanent signs out that would replace these banner signs? Is that what your hope is?
Correct, that's our intent.
So that would be in addition to the Southeast Fifth sign and another sign?
Right, well, once we get that, that signage, that signage that is displaced and permanent, we're not going to put the banners out.
So, so just so, so I'm clear, it, once you get the signage on Southeast Fifth and on your building, you'll no longer use the banners?
That is the intent, because we, we want to eventually get some signage, because we know where the huge traffic flow is, is Army Post and Southeast 14th.
So you anticipate probably in fewer than three years, you may not even be putting the banners out?
That is correct.
All right, thank you. That's helpful.
Mel?
Well, Rick, I appreciate your patience coming back this month. I think the only reason we deferred this is, is we were going late in the day and you had another appointment last month, so we thank you for coming back. And DMAC has been instrumental in, I guess, the resurgence or the resurrection of South Ridge, not as a mall, but as a center for both retail and what you're doing now. This is just tremendous. I had a chance to tour your facility recently. It is really amazing, and you don't do anything that's not quality down there. And, you know, if you want to do this, you know, for the short term, again, you know, as long as the signs are kind of put up to be sturdy enough not to blow over and you take them down, I don't think we need a condition for that. And based on what Cindy said, I would hope three years from now, you have matured well enough that you come back to us with, with something that you're looking at for permanent. Your reputation will, you know, kind of precede you here, and by that stage, I think that DMAC will be well-regarded down there. You'll have your permanence, you're probably not going to need this anymore. So I'm, I'm fully supportive of this, and subject to any other comments, I'd, I'd move staff report to grant the special permit for up to three years.
I'll hold that.
Okay, sorry, Mr. Chair. I know we're trying to keep moving today.
I understand. Any other questions for the applicant? No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else here to speak in support? Is there anybody here to speak in opposition? Now, any last questions for staff?
Now, let the, let the clutch out here in a minute.
Thanks, Mel. Any other questions for staff, folks? Nope, I don't think so. Thanks, Bert. Close the public portion, go to a board decision, then.
All right, well, it sounds like the applicant's okay with the special permit for up to three years, so I'd move approval of that.
Moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand, say aye. Motion carries six to nothing. You're all set. Item 11 is a conditional use permit and variance in the vicinity of 1,000 Thomas Beck Road.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, item 11 is a request for the conditional use permit to allow a tavern at 1,000 Thomas Beck Road. They also need two variances to make that happen. The first of those is a variance of the distance requirement that they need to be separated from any public parks. When the city council amended the liquor regulations a few years ago, one of the new requirements was that any public, or any tavern be at least a hundred and fifty feet from any park, church, school, or daycare. And in this instance, there are actually two public parks within a hundred and fifty feet. One of those is McCray Park, just to the east. There's a fifty-foot wide strip of right-of-way in between the subject property and the park. And then the other park is Grayslake Park, directly across the Thomas Beck right-of-way. So they do need a variance to the separation distance requirement. And their other appeal is for a variance of thirty-seven stalls, less than the minimum required, sixty-seven off-street parking spaces for a ten-thousand-square-foot tavern. As the site sketch shows, they could provide only thirty paved off-street parking stalls on this site. So the ten-thousand-square-foot tavern typically would require sixty-seven. Just going to point out the history on this site. Back in April of 2011, the board did grant this property a conditional use permit to have a volleyball facility there. And a part of that conditional use permit included using two thousand square feet within this building for a tavern use. However, they did not use this appeal, so since they didn't use it within two years, it has expired. So fast forward two years, and in the meantime, the conditional use permit criteria have changed to require the a hundred and fifty-foot separation, so something did shift there in the requirements in the meantime. And I was also just going to point out this other appeal that you heard earlier this year, or an exception to the required off-street parking space that would have allowed the building to be used for a fitness center. So I know that fitness center was there for a short time, it might still be operating there, but with this application, it appears they have a new proposed use of the property, which is a tavern, so. Here's the building. Again, it's a ten-thousand-square-foot building, the paved parking lot just to the east and then to the south of the building. Here's just another view of it. There's a pretty large, open space area that's owned in common by the same property owner of the building. And this is just another view from further down Thomas Beck Road. You can see the park is, McCray Park is behind it there, where the trees are. And then police calls, they're all in front of your chair. We, there really haven't been very many police calls within five hundred feet of the site within the past twelve months, and only four incidences, so. And here's the consent map. They're all in support, except we did get a card back from the Grayslake Neighborhood Association, who is concerned with it being a tavern. Either early this year or late last year, the Grayslake Neighborhood had a plan approved for their neighborhood, and that plan calls for studying the land uses along Thomas Beck Road to determine, I guess, a plan for the redevelopment of this area. When they did their plan, they weren't really sure what the preferred development pattern of this area would be, but they did call for studying it in the near future. So the neighborhood did express concerns that a tavern likely would not fit into the, I guess, ideal development pattern, so. As I mentioned earlier, in order to grant the conditional use permit for this property, they do need to meet the separation distance requirements, and since this property does not, they would need a variance to that. As this board well knows, any variance to the distance separation requirement requires them to demonstrate that without that variance, there is no economic use of the property. We didn't feel that the applicant would be able to prove that in this case, since there are a number of uses that could go into this building that do not require a conditional use permit. So we've recommended denial of the conditional use permit and the variances just on that basis, that they haven't demonstrated the criteria for granting the variance, so.
Bert, if they would have opened up any portion using their permit that we granted them in 2011, would they still be okay where they are?
Yeah, they would have been okay.
And Bert, in, in the proposal, to your knowledge, are they proposing to use all ten-thousand square feet of the building for the tavern nightclub use?
Yeah, I probably hadn't seen a proposed layout, I'm not seeing it right now, but.
Sure.
I believe they wanted to have like, like a stage area for live music.
Sure, okay, yeah, so it'd be a fairly open interior for, you know, it could probably handle a large crowd.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And that was another issue. We don't know that this building was actually designed to be, you know, acoustically contained loud music.
Sure.
There aren't, there are some residential uses about eight hundred feet to the south.
Okay.
But it could definitely impact the use and enjoyment of park. I think it could possibly reach those residents as well, if the music got too loud.
Is, one more question, is there anything in there now? It sounded like the fitness center's out of operation?
When I did the site visit, there were cars there, so I'm guessing something is going on in there, but I don't know what it is.
Any other questions for staff? Thanks, Bert. Applicant, represent the applicant?
First off, hello, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Uriah McStorff, I live on the southeast side of Des Moines, at 3022 Temple Hill Court in Des Moines.
I'm Mike Perkins, 1972 Indianola Avenue in Des Moines.
Thank you.
The reason for our visit today is we're here to appeal to the board. Our application for a conditional use permit for beer, wine, and liquor at our event center, I want to make sure this is very clear. It's not intended to be a tavern solely at all. Unfortunately, because the way the rules are written, as soon as you apply for a beer, liquor license, it automatically dubs you and puts you in the category of a bar tavern. It's our goal to actually make this new facility, that we're going to call the warehouse, into one of Des Moines' premier event centers. It'll be used not just for music events, but also other entertainment events. On top of that, we also plan to use the space for private events, such as corporate. We've got actually one individual that represents a particular school system here that actually is interested in having their Christmas party there. So the idea is to actually bring something to that area that is not there right now. So to continue, again, the building will be used to host music, entertainment, corporate events, among other types of social and special occasion events. We will be equipping the building with seating, restrooms, and kitchen space to accommodate the usage of that area. I was actually the original applicant a couple of years back, wanting to do the volleyball concept. Because as a south sider, there's a lot that's really underserved, especially in that area. So I've actually been trying to work with the Benskins for five years now, to figure out a way to do something, to bring some sort of development to the area, other than just industrial. The two variances we're seeking again are allow us to serve beer, liquor, and wine with a hundred and fifty feet of a park. The second is a variance to allow for parking on the adjacent property that Benskin Development also owns. In regards to the park distance between McCray Park and our space, we understand, obviously, from a strict measuring standpoint, how it can be a limitation, and we're in that range. But if you actually look, and I went back through there, it's so densely populated. Granted, the boundary line is there, but the fact is, too, we allow bow hunting back there for deer to keep the population thin. So as my brother-in-law phrased it, he's like, interesting that you can hunt there, but you can't do anything else. So a long story short, I guess, we also have a massive grade. I mean, it's actually pretty hard to really impact the neighboring park. And then also, as you'll see, further west of that property, that's twelve, another twelve acres of land that Benskin Development owns. And we've gotten permission from them, much like the volleyball concept, to, in the meantime, use that as overflow parking, which that will get to my next point here. This is kind of more of a, this is the site plan, I guess, that he showed you earlier. And so our plan, then, distance-wise, we felt that in regards to the park distance between McCray Park and our space, we're isolated to the dense woodland, the steep grade. Obviously, the closest resident is eight hundred word I'm looking for, padded? Insulated. And we've actually done some testing in there, and really, the decibel rating in that area is 65 outside. By the time the sound escapes the building, we're well underneath that limit. As for Grays Lake, personally speaking, as a South Sider and also a resident, I used to go to Grays Lake a lot before I got into this kind of business, and I still do to this day. But the one thing I always missed when we went to Grays Lake is there was nothing there to attract us for, like, food or beverage of any kind. You had to go over to Court Avenue at that time, and it wasn't always very easily accessible. So it's our hopes, actually, that our proximity will hopefully draw more attention, but also bring business back and forth between our two entities for both our restaurant or food side, I should say, but also just during the summer months, when people are out bike riding and so on. And we will actually be installing bicycle racks to make it bicycle-friendly and outdoor-friendly, if you will. The event center and restaurant will benefit, again, like I said, we feel the area as far as providing food and beverages, rest stops for the Grays Lake commuters and so on. The bike racks, again, will be there to make it a more welcoming and friendly place for them if we are to be open during those earlier parts. But our business operation will actually be functioning from 4:00 p.m. on. 4:00 p.m. until 6:00 p.m. is primarily just our ticket sales or office usage. Anything after 6:00 p.m. is when we actually will actually have any events move forward, unless it's a private event for a corporation or something like that. So we don't think by us having those kind of hours will impede or impact the flow of traffic in that area. We've been spending a lot of time there for the past several weeks, just kind of watching. And, you know, for what we're going to be doing, it won't impact rush hour traffic in the morning or the rush hour traffic in the evening. And then weekend traffic is somewhat sparse, but because of the summer weather, it'll pick up because of the Grays Lake. And that's, again, where we're hoping we can benefit each other. Obviously, the business itself will also provide additional jobs and tax revenue for the area, as well as we feel will contribute to the city's tourism business to a minor degree, granted, but we do have a lot of people interested in bringing business, if you will, projects and so on, from a performance standpoint, from other states, as well as even people wanting to come from Chicago and Minneapolis and other surrounding states to even come to some of the events that we've actually been kind of specking or seeking, if you will. So with that being said, to give you an idea, somebody asked about the layout real quick. Just to kind of give you an idea, because I think you had a concern about the entire space being used. You have to realize, it's a 10,000-square-foot building, yes, but at the same time, this entire area is actually our dock, so it's actually closed storage, it'll be for semi, trailer usage, things of that sort. This is office space here, restroom space, kitchen, and this is actually our assembly space, and this will be our seating areas. The property has some very nice, open windows, so when people are in there to eat and so on and relax, they'll all have a nice view of the Grays Lake area. It's also our hope that going forward with the development in the area, based on some things that we've seen with other people, that they may be interested in possibly developing other more, you know, either residential or commercial-type businesses related to shopping or food and beverage in the area as well, to kind of, you know, hopefully track that in there as well. So again, it's finally our hopes that the Board will extend the same consideration also. Their neighbors Confluence Brewery, to the west of us, were shown when they were granted their license back in 2012. We are going to be different. We're not a brewery. We'll be providing food, entertainment of all types, as well as, obviously, other social gatherings. And then as far as regarding the parking and so on, what we're asking for possibly is a two-year plan to help us develop and add additional parking, mainly because we don't know what the future of the development area is going to be with the owner of the property. They may have plans to build on to that, and obviously, if we add the extra expense of adding that much more concrete parking, it'll actually be financial burden, unfortunately. But it is our goal, long-term, to do that. But in the meantime, we would ask that we can somehow use the adjacent property for overflow, whether it be using remilled asphalt or something like that temporarily, so it's dustless until that time. Either they develop, or then at that point, we develop a parking lot. That's all I have to say.
You know, you're going to have food in here. You don't think you can meet the 40% requirement?
I think we will, because honestly, a lot of our sales are going to be coming from ticket sales and also food throughout that year. I mean, there's going to be some events where probably we'll have more swing versus the other, but on average, I'm pretty confident we'll be able to hit the requirement needed.
Because the concern I've got here is, you know, I like the way you're laid out. I think what you got is a good concept. But the issue is, the City Council has voted these hard and fast limits for the distance. Now, if you're 147 feet away, I think that'd give us a little bit more latitude to be forgiving, but 50 feet away, that's pretty much a closed deal.
Is that just based on property line, then?
Yes.
Because like I said, when we went back there, you know, there's 800 feet of deer hunting area.
Right. You're preaching. I know exactly what you're saying, but we don't have any latitude in that to make that kind of a discretionary ruling. So, and unless the City Council changes it somewhere down the road, that 150-foot limit is pretty much what we're bound by.
Yeah, we're, I apologize, Mr. Chairman. We were actually just hoping that, because actually, we are, we do work with Confluence as well, and part of our object, part of our concept, actually, real quick, I should just point out, is from the beer standpoint, we're not looking to be a full-service bar by any means. We're just providing these drinks and other adult beverages, in addition to pop and water and so on, because obviously, when you go to events of this sort, whether it be a corporate event or a private event or entertainment of any kind, people usually want to have a beverage. We will obviously make non-alcoholic beverages available. We will have the proper security and so on for these events through on-point security to maintain the integrity of the property and so on, and the safety of the property. But the uniqueness of what we were trying to bring also, from a beverage standpoint, we were going to do nothing but microbrews across the state of Iowa. So we had already been talking with Confluence, Next Isle, and other representatives about bringing their product in and just basically having a representation on tap beer of just Iowa beers. There'd be nothing else domestic-wise. And so it's kind of where we're going to try to have our uniqueness, and then also with our food side. So I want to make sure it's clear that we weren't going to try to be like a downtown Court Avenue bar by any means.
No, and that's the reason I ask. If you've got a kitchen in there, and you think you can meet the 40% requirement, that's going to open up a lot more doors for you than trying to qualify as a tavern in that area, so.
I'm pretty sure we can probably meet that. I don't see it. It'll be a challenge in the very beginning, because we're off the market, advertising it, people are used to coming over, but especially during the summer months, where we feel that we can benefit the area a lot more. You know, I think people will be able to come over, park their bike, and have a beverage and have some food. Orlando's does very well over by Waterworks Park, and so we're hoping to complement that by being on the other side of the park to service those individuals.
Like I say, I think you've got a good concept. I like what you've got put together, but I think you're going to have, you're going to go farther along with the 40% rather than a tavern.
And we plan to have good food. It's not going to just be like bar food.
Okay.
One clarification on the ordinance, as it's written here, is on the restaurants, it's a 50% food requirement.
I was going to say, it's 50 for restaurants.
Yeah, right.
Thank you, Larry. Appreciate that.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Mel.
Kind of a comment here, but also a question for you guys. I appreciate how you've laid this out, and the photo is a little misleading. You mentioned the deer hunting area, but this, basically, there's a huge drop-off bluff here. This was the south bank of the Des Moines River, you know, thousands of years ago. This is why we have Hillside Avenue on the south side. But McCray Park, this really is kind of an unusable part of the park. You can drive into the park, there's a nice overlook there you can park at. I've spent many hours there. But when you, just, you know, views of the city. But, but if you, the biggest concern I have, though, is when you call yourself an event center, I actually cringe more than if you were a tavern for this reason. Event centers attract, you're going to have a whole bunch of people coming there for an event all at once. 30 parking spots isn't going to do it.
Correct.
On Southwest Park Avenue, we had a site down there that was kind of an event center, past Orlando's, next to the bike trail. There are parking problems. Toad Holler kind of became an event center on East Army Post Road, parking problems. I'm not sure what our discussion might be, but that, to me, is my bigger concern with what you're doing here. You're going to have people parking everywhere here instantly if you have a corporate event, if you have a special sales thing going, if you have a special concert, you're going to have people everywhere. And I'm just not sure if you've thought through that enough, how you're going to do that. You mentioned parking on the adjacent property. Do you have an agreement with that owner to let you do that?
Yes, sir. Again, the property, unfortunately, again, I've lived on the south side for 20 years.
So you've been to McCray Park to the overlook, too?
Yeah.
Okay.
Actually, but not probably for the same reason as you. But you're right.
Too bad.
Part of the concerns I've had over the years, though, is that whole area has been waiting to be developed.
Yes.
And it's still waiting. And when Confluence went in, it actually brought hope to me, because I'm like, it's a great quality operation. One of my customers on the construction side actually is a small investor in that group. And so when I, you know, started doing business with them, it got me, got a little bit of hope that, oh, they're going to be able to do something now. And there's been a lot of buzz talk about what they're going to possibly do in that area. Obviously, the triathlon occurs every year there, which has been very successful and also a very positive thing. And so I guess we were just hoping to try to help get on the ground floor, helping continue that progress. You're not going to bring in a retail or even a apartment or condos right there that fast without anything around for people to do, besides be at the lake. So with the development going on, I'm okay. I'm excited about that, and we're hoping that's going to keep pushing southward, because that's really as much, that's all we can grow right now in downtown Des Moines. So the parking, definitely, long-term, with the developer of the area, we've talked to them about the adjacent properties, so we wouldn't have to worry about people going across the street and so on, which was a concern, I believe, with the city and police. So the idea is to use the adjacent lot, and then going forward, whether it be funding it becoming available later, or the developer themselves goes forward with their plans at some point, then we would have, obviously, paved parking. But in the meantime, it would definitely, as you know with parking costs these days, it would definitely be economic hardship for us to put that in right now. So we're just asking for some, I guess, some aid, if you will, by allowing us to start the process and then work towards that.
Okay. A question for Larry, and maybe the applicant can help. If he's charging a fee or a rental fee or ticket fees, does that count toward his 50% plus?
As for a restaurant use?
Yeah.
The 50% has to be from grocery receipts by a restaurant that must be derived from the sale of prepared food and food-related services.
Yeah.
So in this case, we looked at him as a venue or an event center. Does that change anything, or?
No, it's still.
So it kind of makes him a tavern, no matter what he's calling, and no offense to you guys, but no matter what you're calling it, you still fall under the tavern clause.
Yeah, I was going to point out, too, for restaurants with a liquor license, they actually need to be 75 feet from a park, so they're only 50 feet, so if the.
He still would make it as a restaurant.
They would need a variance to separation distance, but not a conditional use permit.
Okay. It's a big hill to get over, almost.
I took pictures. I forgot to bring them, but yeah, I went back through there, and you cannot, I mean, it's hard to hike through that. I'm just, and it's thick. So, you know, we get a lot of deer through there, though.
Right, oh, yeah. And the park does close, I think, 10:00 p.m. the very latest. I'm not sure if there's a by dark or dusk clause with the city park, but I know it closes by 10:00 p.m., so I don't know if that has any relevance to, you know, if your activities are later, depending on what they are.
Any other questions?
I actually just have one. Maybe you can answer this. Woolies downtown, are they classified as a tavern or an event center? Because I know the laws, like House of Bricks, you have to be out of by nine, but Woolies, you can have a 10-year-old until 1:00 in the morning.
They do have a conditional use permit for a tavern or nightclub, which any of the.
Okay. I didn't know if that made it, because it used to be, back in the day when I was a kid, that you had to sell a certain amount of ticket sales to be classified as an event center compared to a bar for the age.
In Des Moines, we don't really have an event center.
Right.
We just, it falls under the tavern and nightclub.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. Is there anybody else here to speak in support? Is there anybody here to speak in opposition? Any last questions for staff? Okay, we'll close the public portion and go to board decision, then.
I have one question, actually, for staff. What's the distance to Grays Lake Park?
What'd they say? Grays Lake is 95 feet.
Including the right-of-way.
H33 right at the top.
Yeah.
My concern is that, is that building.
I apologize, Mr. Chairman. Can we get a continuance as well, possibly, for further thought, if any of those resume matters?
Do you have a reasoning for your continuance?
Well, just.
You want to get it approved, I would assume.
Well, we do, and we actually do have the developer, the owner of the property, present here today, so.
And he's heard the proceeding so far, then?
Yeah. He really wants to see this go forward.
Well, yeah, because, you know, I can't say how the Board's going to vote, but I got a feeling it's going to be a tough hill to battle today, so I'd, Mel, what do you?
Could we have our discussion, and then, before we would vote, ask the applicant, okay, based on what you've just heard amongst our discussion, do you want a continuance?
What good is that continuance going to do?
Well, that's kind of why I asked him, what do you want a continuance for? What are you looking at? You want to change something, have some time to go think, and put a better site plan together?
Regardless, the distance, it sounds like that's going to be our one limitation, so.
And there might be some parking issues that they can resolve?
Yeah, because if we close this and went to debate, that's my biggest issue. We have issued some variances before related to the setbacks in the distances, which we do that for a garage if it's too close to a property line. But the biggest concern that I have wouldn't be the park, it would be the parking plan here. We're just, and we've run into this before, the two other times we've had this site, was the concern about parking.
Well, here's, and I kind of agree with you there, Mel. I would like to see the parking issue better resolved, rather than bouncing them out the door right now.
I agree.
I think what they're saying, especially as having the owner here, they're going to present a better plan. Now, we can either vote this down, and they have to come back and do a whole process all over again, or we can continue it for, what, 30 days? And they come back with a better plan that's more agreeable to everybody here on the Board. I, you know, we could, I just, you know, we've got a lot of other items to go through. The reason I didn't want to continue talking about it.
Sure, sure. And I wouldn't beat it to death, because that's exactly where I'm at here.
Yeah.
I'd like to see just a little bit more on the homework side, because that's one of my biggest issues, is the parking, and I think that that's going to cause the biggest issue here.
Yeah, and me, you know, they didn't realize that we're hard and fast with 150 feet, so maybe if there's some modifications that can be done.
On the other stuff?
Yeah.
Then that could.
Yes, so that's where I guess I'm kind of leaning, so.
Yes, and you aren't planning to sell packaged liquor here, are you?
What? I'm sorry?
You're not planning to sell packaged liquor here, cash and carry?
No.
Right, okay, see, that's, to me, that's a big, that's one of the big.
That means you can't go up and park, then, Mel.
No, 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 there'll be no exiting with any sort of beverages like that.
Yeah, I just have one comment. I do think that the city of Des Moines has made a big, big commitment to our community and our neighborhoods, our, you know, our parks and our schools and our churches and our childcare centers, to keep the separation distances intact and to, and to be pretty consistent in how we apply them. And if we begin making, you know, too many exceptions or variances on this separation distance issue, then I think that we have not really served the public. And I know that our mayor is very much in favor of being very consistent in acknowledging these separation distances. So that is a big hurdle for me to jump over right now.
I agree. Point well taken.
So, as it is right now, we have a request from the applicant to continue to the next month's meeting, which is October 23. I think they're within the realm of what they want to do, so I'll entertain a motion to continue the request until the October 23 meeting.
And while we may possibly come right back to the same conclusion.
Yeah, it could be.
You know, if you've got more you want to show or explain or present, I'd second the motion.
I guess I will make the motion.
Did you make the motion?
I am now, so, yeah, I'll make the motion, continue. Mel, you'll second it, okay. Any further discussion? All's in favor to continue to the October 23 meeting, raise your hands, say aye. Those opposed? Oh, boy, three to three. I am now. So, yeah, I'll make the motion, continue. Mel, you'll second it. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor to continue to the October 23 meeting, raise your hand, say aye. Those opposed? Oh, boy, three to three. What are we going to do now, folks? We've got to do something.
The motion fails.
Motion failed, so are we going to hear it?
Which we have just done.
Yeah, the hearing's in progress now, so.
Right.
Continuance has been denied, so we continue on.
And we go to the formal board deliberation now for the vote. Okay.
We have to go to the board procedure, so we're going to vote on, we're going, at this point, we've already heard all the testimony we're going to hear. Is there any last questions for staff? Okay, we'll close the public portion, go to board decision. Sorry, guys. Well, we haven't voted yet. You might want to stick around, see what we do. Sorry.
They're jumping to the end of the movie here. Okay, so 150-foot separation distance is needed from the park, correct?
For tavern use.
Yeah, for tavern use. And what Cherie mentioned, I don't take this lightly. He does have a, what is it, a 50-foot separation. So he's got about a third of the separation needed from a park. I do feel, based on topography, use of the park, a number of things.
I'd like to bring, we've got to follow the procedure now. Sorry.
Are you saying they change the property line?
Oh, that'd have to go, that'd be, if you change the property line, then that'd be a cause to come back to us, so.
But they can't get further away from the park.
No, but they might be able to qualify for 75-foot for a restaurant use, if they can keep it at the 50-foot level. That's what I was trying to get to.
Yeah. So I could see a little consolation on the variance for the separation from a park, based on the topography, the layout, the use of the park, hours of operation of this place. But I need to know more about the parking. I don't think I could support it now, based on the parking angle. I see that as being more of a detriment to neighboring owners. The Grayslake Park across the street has guaranteed people will be parking in there.
Okay.
That's my biggest concern with this. If they had come back next month, I'd be more than happy to listen to that, if they had a solution, working with the owner and the neighbor.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know.
I have a feeling that's what's going to happen, but.
Right, right.
But, let's-
So it's catch 22. I realize there is no continuance. That's what I would support as presented, then. I wouldn't be able to support it as presented, unfortunately.
So would you accept staff recommendation, then?
Kind of by default, yeah.
Do we hear a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. And the motion is to accept staff recommendation, which is deny the requested conditional use permit and variance to allow for a tavern or nightclub. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand, say aye. Those opposed?
Reluctantly, I'll agree.
So it's six to nothing, Cindy?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries six to nothing.
Unfortunately, so.
I agree.
Yeah.
No, you want to go now, guys?
But if they want to come-
I see you next month. I'd get-
If they want to come up with a new plan and refile and repay a fee, can they do that at any-
In a month, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So what I'd recommend-
I want to close my business tomorrow.
All right.
Does close tomorrow? Okay.
So if they came back two months from now with a new plan, we could take a look.
Right here, yeah. Okay. Continue on item 12, variance at 2601 Border Street.
This request is for a variance to allow an electronic reader board sign on a church property. The subject property is the Crossroads Church on Border Street. The Border Street is just, just off of the map is Fluor Drive. So this is south of the Highway 5 bypass. So this is kind of in the recently involuntary annexation area. The city limit is right here with Norwalk being just adjacent to the west side of the subject property. It's a fairly large parcel with the church structure here and the parking lot. They're wanting to replace their freestanding sign with a sign that would have an electronic reader board component. This is, here's a general idea of what their sign would look like. It would have the church's name at the top, and then these electronic components here in the middle, similar to the sign that the board granted for the Fort Des Moines Church recently on Army Post Road.
How about the one over on Beaver and Hickman? Same thing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Here's a photo of the sign that they currently have. This would be replaced with the new sign. This existing sign is a little bit taller than the sign that they're actually proposing to replace it with. This is just looking at the church, which is set pretty far back from the street. Again, here's the diagram of the sign. They're just proposing two supports rather than a base, or a monument base. And then the consent map, the property adjacent to the north and east in support, and then one catty corner in opposition. Staff believes that the proposed sign is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood so long as it's operated in accordance with the conditions that we recommend, with the first one of those being that the sign shall be a monument sign with a brick base. We do realize that the existing church doesn't actually have any brick or masonry on it. It's all metal building. But we do feel that a brick, a sign with a brick monument base would be more appropriate out along Border Street, since there are some residential uses across the street to the south. So, and I won't go through the rest of the conditions, but they're the typical conditions we put on electronic signs. Any questions?
You want a brick base because?
We just felt that it would look a little nicer than the, than the two-metal support posts that they're proposing. We're pretty consistent. Anytime we have an electronic sign, we've always recommended that they do the brick monument, so.
Do you have to call it, Bert, do you have to call it a brick base, or do you call it a monument base, or what is, or a brick or mortar base? What do you, do you really want brick?
Yeah, we do want a brick.
Or a rock face or something, or a brick or masonry, not, not just a poured concrete base?
Right.
Okay.
Or a metal pole.
I think it's worth it right now that it would be a brick base, but if the board was comfortable with the-
Well, you know, it is, is near historic Fort Des Moines by a little bit of a shot.
Sounds good. We'll have to go that way. Any other questions for staff? Thanks, Bert. Applicant, representative of the applicant?
Glenn Blumer, Pastor, Crossroads Church, 303 Trevor Court, Norwalk, Iowa. Yeah, I don't have anything other than say, I guess I was a little bit stunned by the brick base. That's all I'd say is, if you're, if you're going to be consistent, think about the Fort Des Moines sign. That's all we're trying to do, is copy Fort Des Moines sign. We're out in the middle of nowhere, people. We're not along anything. Matter of fact, we are on the border. At 20 feet to the south, we wouldn't be talking to you. We'd be talking to Norwalk. So I guess I'm just asking to be able to copy what Fort Des Moines did. If you want, if you want two poles, or one pole, whatever you want, Fort Des Moines just has, they would have, I don't even know how to run this thing. They would have something like this. They have this one right there. If you want that one, that's fine. That's exactly what Fort Des Moines has.
And Glenn, when you reference Fort Des Moines, you mean the Fort Des Moines Church there on South Side of Army Post, right? Which we had in front of us a year or two ago.
Yeah, exactly. We just want to copy what they've done. Again, if I, if I were 20, 20 feet to the south, I'd be copying all what Norwalk has, and none of them have brick base. No, no, I can't say that. The vast majority don't have brick bases. They just do that right there. But hey, if that's the thing that's holding us up, I'm not going to sit here and complain. I'm-
Fort Des Moines have shrubs at the bay?
I don't think that they do. I'm not sure. Don't quote me on it. But Glenn, to kind of maybe give you a hand in a different thing, I drive by your place all the time because I have lots of family in northern Warren County. You're my way to cut through. I remember when that wasn't paved. I remember when there was a tire dump in the field behind you.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. However, you've often had a lot of temporary banner signs and other temporary signage, and I guess on the weekend, I don't have my zoning board of adjustment eyes on. But if you get this sign, you won't have that anymore, right?
That's exactly right.
That's why you want the sign.
There's no need for it. It'd be like an Easter. We'd put up an Easter banner for a week and a half because it's Easter or Christmas.
Right, exactly. But you'll have this on your sign.
That's what we're trying to do. We're trying to clean up that stuff.
Yeah, yeah. If you were limited to have, instead of double poles, either a single pole or a single width, so whatever the support is, it's single.
Exactly. Just trying to, these bases come with the sign. Signs come with bases-
Sure.
-from the company, and, yeah, just-
Right. Okay.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else here to speak in support? Anybody here to speak in opposition? Any last questions for staff? I think we have the latitude to do what we want, so close the public portion, go to board decision.
I would move staff recommendations.
Second.
Which is the brick base?
Action in a while.
Which is the brick base?
You like brick. I personally do, but.
Yeah, I think we're looking for some consistency in our city.
I think we're looking for consistency, but I think we need variances or new decisions that, for example, the church in the brick neighborhood, you'd require a brick base. I don't see the purpose of the expense or having a brick base when the building itself is a brick. If the building itself is brick, I would say, yes, you want to maintain the character and the environment of it, but it's not. It really doesn't make sense to me to have a brick base.
Right.
So I would move staff with that amendment.
Well, we got one on the floor already, so.
I'd pick my battles. You know, we're not complaining because it's an electronic sign, thank goodness. We're limiting the hours. The neighbors directly across the street, who I know what their houses look like, they aren't complaining. That other guy's cattywampus at the four-way stop, and that's a large lot, old farmstead. But I'd have to pick my battles, and I don't think this is one I'd want to pick. So I just-
I have a question for Bert. Bert, it seems as though the cities, that your position is, that you really prefer a masonry or brick facade. Why is that? Is it apparent-
Just for statics purposes. It looks a little more permanent.
Okay. Because I noticed that when this comes up, you know, the default is always to go, you know, then they start begging for a pole, or a double pole or something. But, so you're looking for consistency throughout the metropolitan area?
Well, in our recommendations, anyway. I know we've recommended it on Army Post and on Beaver, and the board struck, or has gone without the brick base on those two, at least.
So you don't, you're, so you're not 100% in favor of always a brick base or some kind of masonry?
Well, I think anytime we have an electronic reader board, that's kind of, there's a give and a take. We're going to give them the electronic reader board we want, a higher quality sign in exchange.
And the brick is the higher quality, okay, from your perspective?
Yeah.
You get the electronic reader board is what's, what's available.
Should be the issue, yeah.
It's the new signage.
So, Mr. Chair, there's a motion on the table, huh?
In one second. Any last questions for staff? Okay, thanks, Bert. Back to, yeah, it is to accept staff recommendation, so. Is this, we'll see where you pick your fights, Mel. So, motion is to accept staff recommendation with a masonry base. Any further comments, questions? Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand, say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries four to two. I mean-
It'll be a very nice sign now.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Let's go to item 13, is a variance, 5900 Walnut Hill Drive. Get that vote, Bert?
Yes.
Four to two, okay.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, this is a property, actually not too far from the cases you were discussing, Eric, but 57, 59th Street here, coming off of Beast, or Grand on the west side. This is Walnut Hill Drive, and it kind of angles or curves around here to merge in with 59th Street. And so we're dealing with this property right on the end of the block. It has three frontages, actually. So it actually has to meet under the way the code reads, three front yards in terms of how we allow fencing and so forth. If you look along the houses, they all face 60th Street here towards the west, and then they, their effective rear yard is up against 59th Street, which is, which sits higher slightly than the rest of the properties. This is when you look down Walnut Hill Drive at the property. So you see, kind of has its front yard facing to the north. So if, from the public's perspective, that's their front side. This is towards the 59th Street side, and you can see they've, DSL cabinets have been placed. They actually sit back quite a ways from the street, and you can see where the neighbor has put up their screen fence to the south. The appellant is asking to do an L-shaped type fence that would screen that from public view, but not actually fence in their entire property. They just want some type of screen. I'm going to show you an example of something that was done in another neighborhood not too far away. It's kind of just a little, this isn't an opaque screen here, but to show you kind of just an L-shaped fence, which isn't fencing their entire rear yard.
It's, it's not screening a cabinet, though, obviously. It's, what, a patio or something?
There's a cabinet on that property that-
On a different spot, though. And it's not screened?
No, but I don't, it could be now. I think that's something that we actually pushed for at the time.
So please, folks, just want to screen the cabinets?
Yes. And so, and the other thing I should point out is that there's been a number of previous variances granted down, down the line for those neighbors to have rear yards that were fenced in that were actually considered front yards. So it's not like there's this character that's established that doesn't have fences.
Right.
So from that standpoint, staff is not overly concerned about affecting the essential character. I'm going to pass around it. All of the comment cards were positive from neighbors. One thing we do want to have is some discretion as to what the fence is going to be designed as. At this time, I don't think we actually had an actual design submitted, so we want to have at least the ability to look at that administratively before issuing a permit, making sure that it's in character. Something decorative, you know, like the neighbor has, is probably okay, appropriate, where they have the cut treatment at the top. Probably your plain picket fence is probably a little too simple. We'd want to see something a little more in line with what you see around the neighborhood, so.
Is there any responsibility to the CenturyLink or Quest or DSL, whoever owns this, to fence it?
Once, the way the ordinance was written is if they were pulled back far enough off the street that they were, that they, they just had to have their cabinets in an orderly fashion.
But there's no screen?
No, they don't have the screen, or, you know, if they have to ask for variance of that setback, then they're, you know, the board is, in some instances, required like landscaping or something. But that's the way it was written. And so that's actually a recent revision within the last few years that we did when they, this came up, the city council had concerns from the CenturyLink folks, and they revised the ordinance because we used to not allow them to sit close to the street. And so the other thing you should know is that the street right away, kind of from the curb, is a little wider than you might think. So if I could get Bert to zoom in a little bit. Their property line sits almost the width of the street back from the curb. Here, you can see that, the green strip here, the curb, probably the tip of my pen is, and then their property line sits back here, and there's all that green in. So what appears to be quite a bit of private yard probably is still technically street right away. So that, even that fence and the neighboring fence probably sits back at the property line. And so you have this area that's still in the right of way.
Is this, is this like flood sediment, or was there construction here? It looks like there's washout sand there.
I think that's probably from when they ran the, excavated the cables, probably.
Okay.
Yeah. So the, the work on the cabinets is fairly recent, in this photo.
Gotcha.
And I apologize, I didn't take a better color picture, so I'm relying on one that, the one I took was very blurry.
You took a black and white picture?
This black and white one was part of the, what was submitted back at the time-
Must be printed out.
Of the application, so.
Okay.
Again, staff is just wanting to make sure we see the design. Other than that, we're not, we don't think it's going to be a detrimental impact on the surrounding area, so.
Okay. Questions for staff? Thanks, Eric. Applicant, representative of the applicant?
My name is Ray Benter. I live on the property in question, 5900 Walnut Hill Drive. And we sold this property to CenturyLink, obviously, to put in the- And we sold this property to CenturyLink, obviously, to put in the DSL boxes. And at the time, they indicated that, and paid us additional monies to put a six-foot fence around the thing, which sounded peachy. And obviously, we weren't thinking of zoning at the time. But if you've driven along that part of Ingersoll where it meets 56th Street and goes on around that curve down, meets with Grand Avenue, you would have noticed that in the past, a lot of, either previous to the ordinance as it is, or with leeway given, people have put yard fences along the backs of those properties, because they are all half-blocked properties facing on the street away from Ingersoll and away from 59th Street. And in our case, we're on a kind of a peninsula where, as indicated, we have three front yards supposedly. But I would go along with the staff recommendation that everybody deserves to have at least one backyard. And in this case, this sits against our neighbor's fence, which is a six-foot fence. 21 out of 35 people along that route have such fences. And so it certainly isn't an unusual thing. But the thing in question is visual pollution. That's what we have. Looking off of our deck, we're the closest people in the world to those boxes. And the people across the street actually have less of a hindrance because of that big setback from the city street. And so visually, I compare it to the old box that used to be there from the telephone company. It was a four-foot box, about so wide, and kind of an aqua color, and you could hide that with one bush, and we did. But these new boxes are like 20 times the amount of shiny metal facing you as you drive by or walk by or whatever. And so I would like to put this L-shaped fence in to block the view from the west, from our deck, and from the north, from the rest of our property. On the other side, the land we sold abuts up against the city property, and so I can't put a fence there, obviously, unless the city would grant something there. But in that case, I plan to plant bushes to screen it from the actual street side. And you might ask, why not plant bushes all around the thing? And my experience in growing bushes over the 36 years I've lived there is that I will be long gone before that would come to fruition and actually cover those six-foot boxes. So, and also the dieback of bushes and the unpredictability of those would be in contention. The other thing is that I would then landscape the fence so that it would look good. And obviously, we could work with the planning division to come up with a design for a fence that would be aesthetically pleasing and still do the job of blocking that horrendous view. If you've come to my deck and sit there and look, you'll understand what I'm talking about. They have made a great improvement over past month or so in putting grass seed in and putting new soil there. So it doesn't look quite as horrendous as it does in that photo. But the boxes are still there glaring away like all, like you wouldn't believe. So I guess going along with recommendations of staff, we would be glad to work with them to get something aesthetically pleasing that would still block that glaring sight, so.
So you don't have any idea what your fence would look like, but you're willing to work with staff on something?
Right. I assume that we've tried to match up to the neighbor's fence, which does block in their whole backyard. And we would never extend the fence beyond that. It's just a visual screen is all we want to do.
One thing also I will tell you, you might live to a ripe old age to see those bushes get up there, but inevitably CenturyLink will probably have to come by and tear up the bushes to get at the cable, and so all gone for knots. So that's the other reason you don't need it.
It's very lovely, too.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. Anybody else here to speak in support? Is there anybody here to speak in opposition? Any last questions for staff?
They can nod to this. Was this not on consent because it was a variance rather than an exception?
Yeah, unknown. We wanted to be able to put some conditions in case.
Okay.
I think at the time we took it in, we weren't sure how we're going to approach it. One thing I would point out, because I'm sure the appellant wants the ability to have a finished side to look at, we're probably looking to have a design that would be finished on both sides to some level. And then I think that anything that would go in the right-of-way planting-wise would have to go through our municipal arborist.
Can we leave that up to you? We don't have to decide on that.
Yeah, yeah.
I just wanted to point out that we don't, we don't just let neighbors plant trees in the right-of-way. We have to have permission, so.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for staff? Hearing none, we'll close the public portion, go to board decision.
I would move staff recommendations with the addition to number two, that the fence be finished on both sides and that the applicant works with city staff. Any last?
I second that.
Okay, they moved in second. Are you okay with that? Thinking it could squeeze some more money out of CenturyLink? Tell them, hey, look, no, they won't do it. You can always try. Okay. But moved in second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand, say aye. Motion carries six to nothing. We'll be driving by to take a good look at that fence. Item 14 is a conditional use permit at 333 East Grand. And we have correspondence on that, folks.
Just what I'm passing around, I don't think, the police report.
Yeah. I don't think I, I might have to do a workout to lift this thing up.
Mr. Chair members of the board, this item is a request for a conditional use permit for a limited food sales establishment. A limited food sales establishment is a business under 12,000 square feet in area that derives at least 60% of its sales from merchandise other than beer, wine, liquor, or tobacco products. The subject property is the East Village Square Apartments. The first and second floor are the live-work units with four stories of apartments above. Here's the picture of the building. They're wanting to go into unit 104, which is on the east fourth side. You can see they've already had to sign up for the East Village pantry. According to their application, they would be selling a mix of products, including groceries, and then also the cigarettes, beer, wine, liquor, and like lottery tickets, money orders, things of that nature. Here's just the general layout that they've submitted, showing coolers and their shelving, and also the stairs leading up. As I said, these are, the first and second floors are kind of loft spaces that are live-work area. This police report packet is kind of thick, but that's because it's actually two properties. The first several pages are for the police reports within 500 feet of 333 East Grand Avenue over the past 12 months. And then the bulk of the packet is within 500 feet of the applicant's other site, which is at 208 Fourth Street. So you can look through the police reports for their existing business that they're wanting to, this East Village pantry would be similar to the, I believe it's called the downtown pantry, similar business model. So we're looking through the police reports, there aren't a whole lot of issues. There are a few cases of theft, but nothing too significant showing a nuisance at their existing site, so. However, staff does have concerns about a business at this location selling alcohol that's packaged for off-premise consumption. Given the number of taverns in the area, there's at least seven within a block area, I'm just concerned with the pedestrian nature of this area and that many taverns that there would be the ability for people maybe had a few, too many, stopping here, getting some packaged liquor and consuming it, you know, within the area, and thus causing more nuisances in the area. So we did have that concern. This is Zone C3, which does not require any separation distances, so they're not subject to that separation distance that is in effect in other parts of the city. But just for the reasons I gave, we don't feel that this is an appropriate location for this business. We just feel that, given the pedestrian nature of the area, that it could constitute a nuisance. So we've recommended denial. Any questions?
Mel?
Quick one. If they were not planning or asking to sell wine, liquor, or beer, they would not need any other permits to have a quote grocery store in that spot, correct?
Correct. They could sell, I'm sorry, cigarettes or tobacco products.
Okay. So the general zoning classification for that district would allow for a quote grocery store outside of wine, liquor, and beer?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Did they put on the application, do we know what hours of service would be straight and asked about?
Yeah, here.
I'll probably ask that.
Oh.
7:00 AM to 10:00 PM on Monday, Thursdays, and so.
But you're right, if this is, if the board does feel inclined to grant it, that is something you could do is limit their hours of operation so they don't conflict with the busiest tavern hours.
Any other questions?
I got two, just wanted to clarify. You're right that they could have a grocery store here, and we didn't want our staff recommendation to be interpreted as, well, staff doesn't want a grocery store downtown. We just felt that this small of a business, selling packaged liquor, it's more of a convenience store than a true grocery store.
Gotcha.
Okay. Thanks, Bert. App can, or representative of the applicant?
Hello, my name is Shahid Mahmood, live on 612 East Jackson Avenue. And that's my wife.
I'm Eileen Mahmood. I also live at 612 East Jackson Avenue.
Yeah, the reason we're here, we apply for the liquor license because we, to avoid, first of all, we have a 60/40. Our goal is to have 60% other than beer, wine, liquor. And another thing to avoid that, to hire liquor department, we're not going to have any half-pint, we're not going to have any singles or beer. We plan on to do just a package. We want people to just buy, go home and drink them, not to just buy and drink it on the street or anything. We will have not a small package, just a bigger package, like 12-pack, 18-pack, and 24-pack, that kind of beer. And also liquor, we will have minimum is a 750, which is pretty tall bottle. If you drink that, you pretty much be done for the day. And other thing, we're going to have a little bit, pretty much everything to just provide what our neighborhood need. And that's all, pretty much.
A lot of people in the neighborhood do not have cars because they work and they live downtown. So we will have fresh meat, vegetables, fruit. We also have your bread, milk, eggs, and flour oil, like all your other grocery store will have it. It's just instead of having aisles and aisles of it, it'll just be kind of compartmentalized into a smaller section.
And we will not have any high, we just have a limited beer and limited liquor. It's only just upon a customer request. We're not going to have too much overstock. We have only just a three-door, which is pretty much is going to fit everything in the three-door according to the, anything with the liquor department or beer department.
Okay. Questions? Mel?
So you're operating the business now as a grocery store? You're not selling any alcohol, is that correct?
We are selling on 208 Fourth Street, which is on downtown Des Moines. Not on East Village. We not open yet on East Village.
You're not. If we denied this and said, nope, sorry, you can't have this special, special permit here for this, would you still open the grocery store?
Definitely.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you. Is there anybody else here to speak in support? Is there anybody here to speak in opposition? Any last questions for staff? Pretty quiet crowd. We'll close the public comment, go to board decision.
Well, unless I'm missing out, I don't think the East Village has a place where I could just walk in and buy my milk and my eggs and my...
Not true.
It's not true. All right, I want to clarify that. But I think there's a need for that. If he wants to have a grocery store, that's awesome. Now, if he wants to start selling alcohol, well, it brings up a whole different ball of wax. So I know, Jake, with your knowledge of that area, what do you, what's going on down there? Are there other grocers?
Yeah, there's actually a pretty large grocery store at the, right on Grand Avenue. The, I think it's called the Oriental Grocery.
Okay.
They sell just about everything on the list.
So if he was just selling groceries, then, I'm going to ask you this, do you think he'd be able to compete? Or because we already have a grocery store, eh, he wouldn't be able to do this without being allowed to sell liquor?
I don't think I could make a...
Okay. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but...
...succeed or not. I don't think that the use of a live-work space is really in alignment with, I don't think a grocery store or pantry or whatever you want to call it is in alignment with the intent of a live-work space. It's artists, it's small, you literally are intended, the intent is to live in the second floor and have your business on the first floor.
The picture we saw, it's not on the ground floor?
It looked like it was both.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. The signs, the signs on the ground floor there.
But those are apartments. They're live-work apartments.
Yes, it says, East Village Pantry. Yeah, the customer would walk in on the ground floor.
There's actually two stories in this lower part here with...
Yeah, there's a mezzanine floor.
Like a loft, almost, right? Fancy name for, you know. And I think it, regarding what the intent is for the uses or what have you, that may be one thing, but within our purview here, you know, would this constitute a nuisance for those surrounding properties, business, residents, if they were allowed to sell this alcohol?
There is a proliferation of bars there. It's a lot. So are we going to be contributing to the problem by granting it?
Right.
That I don't know.
Yep. That's probably our question here.
Yeah. It'd be interesting hearing what other people weigh in on it.
I think that the hours that have been outlined are outside of what I would expect for a grocery store also. It seems like by going to midnight on weekends, there's a clear intent to sell something other than meat and potatoes.
If we throttled it down to, let's say, after hours, put that, can you put, what is their hours? Seven to 10 during the week till Thursday, and 12 on Saturday, Friday, Saturday? Put the head it up, no.
It's on page 43.
Bert, is it 43? Thanks. So Jake, my question is, if we knocked it down, let's say seven to nine on Monday through Thursdays, say seven to 10 Fridays and Saturdays, and nine to nine on Sunday, what would you think about that?
I think that's better, but what about, do we have this, does staff have any ability to limit the size of the materials that they're selling? If everything that these people say is true, it's not a problem.
Mm-hmm. I think we got somebody right here next to me that might be able to help us out on that.
I believe you can put those conditions on the conditional use permit, and that way it's of record. So if they violate that, then the zoning enforcement officer can come in, and if they violate the terms of the conditional use permit, then it's back to the board.
Okay. If, any way to get support from me would have to include something to that effect.
Just a couple types of conditions that have been recommended on other things in the past, where limiting the display area to 10 square feet, or also prohibiting the sale of individual bottles or cans.
That's the bigger, the latter is the more...
Yeah.
Which is what the appellant talked to that a little bit, about size and...
Yeah.
They're talking about limiting individuals.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you can't want to buy like one can of beer.
It seems odd, but you'd rather they buy a case.
Have we heard opposition yet?
Yeah, no, there is none.
And there's no support either?
No, just the applicant. So...
Seems rather odd for the East Village to not have support or opposition.
That's my old stomping grounds, too, you know.
Right. You know, and I think that, I like our discussion, because I think if we put some constraints on the size of the space they can use, no individual beers or bottles of wine or bottles of liquor, those little ones that people walk around with, and then maybe constrict the hours a bit. I would feel better about it, too. I mean, I know these are supposed to be for people who have a shop and live above it, but that's not always feasible in terms of what can you really have there to afford to pay rent and such. I mean, it's not a cheap place to have a business. I'm going to the East Village. It's probably fairly expensive to run a business, so give them a little bit of room.
Okay. Who wants to put a motion out then, to encapsulate all that we've talked about? Jake, I see a smile on your face, is it?
I'm smiling because I don't know how you articulate that.
Okay.
Why don't we make a motion to grant the condition...
Why don't we make a motion to grant the conditional use permit at 333 East Grand Avenue, conditional upon the hours being limited to...
Maybe I need to clarify. They can stay open, the hours, the hours that they can sell liquor?
The hours that they can sell.
All alcohol or just liquor?
All alcohol.
Okay.
All alcohol. No alcohol sales after 9:00 PM Monday through Thursday, and no alcohol sales after 10:00 PM on Friday or Saturdays.
Linda, I might just disappoint to be positive here. If you're talking an hour difference, just make it the same.
10 or 9.
I don't know which way you want to go, but just make it the same. So then the customers get it in their head, I'm done after X time every night.
No alcohol sales after 9:00 PM.
There you go.
All the way through.
No individual containers of alcohol or beer, limited to 12 packs of beer, and I have no idea how alcohol comes.
He might help us out. You have a better idea of what you want.
I mean, see why we could come up with some, some language.
Yeah.
I don't...
The alcohol come is the, the little one, which is a .50, then is a 200 millimeter, then is 375, then is a 750 is the mix.
The fifth is like the tall bottle, and then the half gallon is the big one.
So, so do you want to sell no, no less than a fifth?
No less than a 750, 750 milliliters.
We will not have no single serves, they'll all be like packaged.
We not plan on having any single beer anywhere, it's all packaged beer.
But maybe a single bottle of wine from a wine rack?
Right, that will be a minimum 750 milliliters.
Okay, all right, so that fits in as well then?
Right.
Okay.
And with the hours, we don't have any problem. To avoid the customer, if, if we open till midnight and we can also alcohol, we can have a lot of customer complaints and stuff, why cannot buy? To avoid that, we can change the hour to open till nine or 10, whatever it is.
And that'd be up to you.
And there will be no hesitation.
What I'd offer to you is, if, if you get that many requests, you can always come back before us and say, extend the hours.
People always, as long you open, people want to, they come. When you don't sell them, they get pissed, and then they become, to avoid all the situation, we can change the hour to nine or 10, whatever it is, and then we'll just close after that, that will be fine. And another thing, there is a grocery store, but we talked to a lot of neighbors, and they don't feel comfortable going to the Oriental Store, because they don't have a lot of American grocery, they have a lot of Asian grocery. There is a lot of, like Asian food. I shop myself over there for Asian grocery.
They sell six-pack beers also there, so.
To avoid that, we will, whatever, we will, we're there to help the neighborhood, whatever they need for convenience, and whatever the rejection it is, we happy with that, that's fine.
So you're comfortable with the way we've got this together?
Right.
Okay.
I mean, I would love to have, instead of nine, if we can open till 10 o'clock Monday through Saturday, and then Sunday we close on to nine anyway, so then we can serve liquor till nine, till beer, till 10, and then we just close 10 o'clock Monday through Friday.
I don't think, would you...
I'll revise it to no alcohol sales after 10:00 PM.
Yeah, we will close 10:00 PM, we will not be open after 10:00. That will, customer will be happy, we'll be happy, there will be no conflict.
You got Linda to change her mind, I gotta cut you.
Write that down.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, guys.
Okay, strike the nine and make it 10?
Yes.
Okay. And restricting, and you, Bert, you got the restrictions on the, nothing less than 750?
No liters.
Right? And no single cans of beer, whatever?
But 12-pack, no less than a 12-pack.
Oh, 12-pack beer?
That's fine, that's fine.
Wait a minute.
I have a question. And for years, a lot of people do it, it's done coming six-pack bottles.
Okay, six-pack bottles.
We got it, we got it. Yeah. So no, nothing less than a six-pack, all right? Now, Michelob will come out with a four-pack and screw everything up.
Bartle's and James has for years.
All right. I'll second that, Linda, so. Been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand, say aye. Motion carries six to nothing. We'll be stopping by and checking the place out.
Anytime.
That'd be me and Mel. Let's do one more. I see some people in here who've been waiting patiently. So item 14, or, no, wait, that's one, item 15 is a variance at 614 University.
Yes, and the first thing I want to point out is that in the applicants working with neighbors and other interested parties, that they've revised their request to not request a sign at the northeast corner of the property, which is the southwest corner.
I see some people from Merle Hay. Have they, have you seen the updated sheet that they, okay, good.
And then they are still requesting a sign that would be taller than the eight feet, but they did limit it down to 15 feet at the northwest corner of the site, which is the southeast corner of Seventh and University. And did I give you the one that said Sixth Avenue Corridor?
Yes.
I just want to make sure. I know Bert made copies of, I'm going to send them all around just so you can see. I want to make sure that the originals come back.
And Eric, as, as you've already started explaining this, can you point on the map then where things are when you show the site or site plan?
Correct. And site plan might be the easiest way to deal with this, so you can, I'll go back to the original layout.
Are these the originals?
If I can find it here. That was a challenge with a lot of changes here in the recent couple days, making sure we had the right request in front of us.
So Eric, you're, you've got the updated request and recommendation in our packet then?
Yeah, we didn't do anything with the recommendation.
Okay.
But they definitely changed their request. The original, this is the layout that's been approved under site plan by the Plan and Zoning Commission. The request was to have a 17-foot monument-type sign, which is, is a full base to the, to the ground, basically, under the way the code's defined, and at both corners. The, they've withdrawn the request to have anything above eight feet here, so they can could maybe get a permit tomorrow for an eight-foot sign that's ground-mounted. And they've, I'll, I think the appellant will show you an example, they've given us a drawing that would show this sign. That doesn't require any action by the board, okay? So they're, that's what they're proposing now at the northeast corner, at the intersection of Sixth and University. So that's off the table. They still believe they're limited from putting that type of sign here, and would request a 15-foot, so they've lowered the height, I think trying to reduce it to the extent that they feel they can, and appease concerns that have been raised to them by both city of staff and some of the interests that are involved here, so. From the staff's perspective, again, we do appreciate their effort in going with the ground-mounted signs. The design guidelines for site plan require ground-mounted signs or monument-type signs. At the time that the P&amp;Z looked at it, they don't look at the size, okay? They just determine the type. And site plan really doesn't get into size and area of signs, it very infrequently deals with signs at all. But in the design guidelines for convenience stores specifically, the ground-mounted or monument-type signs are the, are the requirement. So that was what was approved, but no, no area or anything can be granted through the site plan, so that's why it's in front of you now, to go over the provisions that are in the ordinance, which is the eight-foot limitation when it's that close. Now, if the, if this sign was 20 foot back from either of the street property lines, they could have it up to the height of the district, which is 45 feet, so. And then other types of businesses in this zoning could also have a sign that would be a pole or a pylon-type sign at that location, but the clearance at the bottom end of the cabinet would have to be 12 feet above the ground, so. But again, the convenience stores really don't allow for that type of sign, so. They're trying to fit within the spirit of the design guidelines, but also get a sign of a height that they believe is necessary. Staff, again, we believe the scale, that close to the street of the, of a 15-foot sign is still a little too imposing on the, close, that close to the public right-of-way. While we agree that this, this size sign here, looking at the width of it at 13 feet, couldn't be done in that area, we agree that, that width is going to be impossible to achieve in the setback area that they've allowed for in their site. We think that they could still do a lower type sign, it's going to shrink the areas of the copy and the, the pricing and everything, but we believe that can be accomplished and still serve their, their intent for advertising their business. There's plenty of other opportunities, that they're getting signage by right on the building, on the canopies. I know pricing is probably one of the biggest things when you're selling gas, in terms of whether you draw a customer that drives by, so we understand that that's critical. But staff believes that we can still achieve it within the constraints of the ordinance and meet their purposes, so we don't find that they meet the test for variance.
Mel?
So Eric, then...
So Eric, your staff rationale and your recommendation is basically stays the same?
Yes, as much as we appreciate the efforts on the, the appellant's part to reach compromise and work with other interests.
Right. In support of the neighborhoods in general, your recommendation remains the same, eight-foot height maximum?
And we're kind of, staff is looking at this from the intent of the ordinance and from the perspective of the community as a whole.
Okay. Yep.
Any other questions for staff?
I, I was going to show you the photos of those corners, it's already under construction, so. This is looking, this is the corner that's now going to have the monument-type sign, so you can see even the construction trailer there, which is about the size of the sign, is fairly visible. And then on this corner, looking towards Mercy Hospital from, this is actually from the Sea Fresh Market property, looking to the southeast at the site under construction. This is the type sign that's being proposed. And to get a sense of the scale, they've provided the height of an average person, five and a half or six feet tall, and then that's 15-foot. And did I show the consent map?
No.
While we had a lot of communication, we didn't actually get any adjoining owners to give us any response.
Okay. Any questions for staff?
No. Just let it go.
Thanks, Eric. Applicant, representative of the applicant?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, members of the board, my name's Larry James Jr., 3101 Ingersoll, I'm an attorney for QuickTrip. Appreciate Eric's opening. I would add a couple things. First off, for those of you who aren't familiar with the, the new model that QuickTrip is building, you see a photo of it here. QuickTrip's very excited by the opportunity to build the first store in Des Moines at Sixth University, replacing a store, Kitty Corner, which will be leveled to the ground completely, and no building will remain, no canopy, and is being sold to Mercy Hospital. It'll become green space. The, the site, it was a difficult site to develop for QuickTrip. You can see here, we're, the, the top of this drawing is south. To the left there is the Mercy Hospital parking lot, to the right is the DMAC parking lot where the dairy used to be, directly to the north, just down below is McDonald's, you've got the Sea Fresh Market, Kitty Corner, and then you've got the existing QuickTrip down in the left-hand corner. The site, as you can see by the topography, was very difficult to build on, it falls a great deal, and this, this has all germane to this discussion, as I'll share. Result of the, the topography, working with staff, the QuickTrip needs to build a retaining wall along Seventh, actually along the entire Seventh and then University and part of Sixth. The highest part of the retaining wall is on Seventh Avenue, just at the corner of Seventh and University. During the discussion with staff, again, part of the site plan review, QuickTrip really had to look at the plan several times and met closely with Riverbend Neighbor Association, Cheetum Park, and the Sixth Avenue Corridor Group, incorporating the Sixth Avenue Streetscape Plan along Sixth Avenue, really intending to incorporate that into the plan. And as part of this, you can see those dotted lines, the dotted line along Sixth Avenue to the left, there's a, like a rectangle there, that's additional right-of-way that QuickTrip was required to, to convey to the city. And then there, the dotted line on the bottom there is additional four and a half feet of right-of-way that was required by the city to, to convey. The reason that is germane, so this again is, as Eric pointed out, we're really left with a site that is very tight from the signage perspective. When the initial proposal was put before staff and the planning commission and council, the signs that QuickTrip initially applied for, for the variance were shown. Don't disagree that there's an entire process to go for permitting, and, and I don't disagree that there was a variance requirement. But that being said, I think that it should be noted that at no time was there any change or any change from what was part of the site plan review. QuickTrip all along has agreed to build these signs, and it was apparently misunderstood by QuickTrip that that was something that would be supported by staff. With discussions with the neighbor associations, there's actually two that are affected by this, Riverbend and Cheetum Park, as well as with the Sixth Avenue Corridor and discussions with staff, QuickTrip withdrew its, its request for the variance for the northeast corner, like Eric said. It is able to fit on that site, this eight-foot monument site, sign that, that you've seen. This site on the corner of Seventh University is much more difficult, and I'll, again, I'll just explain what I believe is the hardship here. Actually, it might be more beneficial if I could go back and just have the paper copy so I can point out some things. So the shaded line here, that's right-of-way that QuickTrip dedicated to the city. Prior to that, the, this bottom line here was the start of the right-of-way. The new start of the right-of-way is here. This drawing here is actually the curb line. It's a significant amount of space, it's not like the sign is right up against the curb. There's a sidewalk right here. And we're going back to that retaining wall, the line that's shown here, and this, this little up and down triangle, that's the sign that QuickTrip is proposing. The, the right-of-way line to the back of the retaining wall is nine and a half feet. In the absence of the, of the conveyance that was required by site plan, QuickTrip would have 14 feet from right-of-way to back of, back of wall. Due to the conveyance, they now have nine and a half. And going back to the eight-foot sign that QuickTrip is putting on, that would meet code today, is put, that is installing at Sixth University, that simply wouldn't fit. You can see the, again, the 13, it's 13 feet wide here from the right-of-way, well over to the back of the, the retaining wall. If I can go back to the...
And Larry, can I just, if it's okay with the chair, just a clarification question as you present, you need... You need the retaining wall because the site itself will be higher than the sidewalk? Do I have that correct? Or is it the other way around?
The site is, is actually lower.
The site is lower?
Right, because on Seventh,
Okay.
It goes from Seventh down to Sixth, like that.
Okay, right.
So, it, it's very much, it's very important. I mean, the site wouldn't work without that wall.
And I see you have some extensive drawings here, but you don't necessarily have like a cross-section profile view of the proposed contours or anything yet?
No, I don't. I just have the
That's okay.
The elevations on, they're shown on the
On the map.
The map.
You can see the contours there, kind of?
Yep. So, actually, staff felt, and I'll let staff talk to this,
Sure.
At that corner, it's actually beneficial because that the, the wall is there, because the cars are going to be below grade, somewhat more hidden from the street.
Right, okay, okay.
But again, that is, that really what I see is the hardship, and I think it is a hardship that, that here, this wasn't created by QuickTrip. The, the sign that they've put in other locations, which they're putting on at Sixth and University, that they can fit at Sixth University, won't fit there. The, the sign that they're proposing, again, this is, I'm showing on your screen is the, the one at Sixth University.
Right.
This is the one that they're proposing for Seventh University. Initially, again, what, what I like to do and QuickTrip likes to do is really work with neighborhood associations and work with the city. They've done this throughout the entire site planning process, really recognizing that those neighborhood association members are QuickTrip's customers, so they want to be a good neighbor. So we went back to the drawing board, looked at this and said, okay, we can fit this eight-foot on the corner of Sixth University. We can't fit it here. But going back from the 17-foot, four-inch sign, they're proposing a 15-foot sign instead, which is shown on your screen. That, that proposal now has been enthusiastically supported by Cheetum Park Neighborhood Association. We have a representative here today to speak to that. Also, Riverbend Neighborhood Association, they have appreciated the, the efforts that QuickTrip has gone, and it has been, it's a great deal of effort to make this site work. And the Sixth Avenue Corridor, and there is a representative, Laura Peters from Sixth Avenue Corridor here as well today to speak and support. So, in closing, I would, I would say that, that the, the site was difficult for QuickTrip to, to build on. They're excited about the prospect. They think that this is a great corridor, great potential for the city. They're in full support of all the efforts that Sixth Avenue Corridor is making to improve the area. The fact is, is that the, the sign that I think that staff is, is looking at, or that would meet code, won't fit here. So I do have with me today Matt Brooks with QuickTrip. If there's questions that I can't answer, if you have any questions for Matt, please feel free to, to pose them. Thank you.
Questions?
Matt, two questions. I've seen your store out at 22nd Street in West Des Moines. I'm assuming this layout's very similar?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Now you have the QT Kitchen logos here shown on your, you know, conceptual drawing. By right of signage, will you be allowed to put those up?
Those are not actually the same.
Okay.
It will not have the QuickTrip logo on it. It'll just be the regular button sign that says QT.
Okay, all right. And that, that kind of leads me to another question. I see on your 15-foot sign, which you have brought down, and you've got support from the neighbors, you've got the QT Kitchen thing on there, too. So that's two-foot tall, and then you've got a three-foot base. What, what if we could just knock it down to like 12-foot? You know, you want 15, the city's saying eight's the max, that's what they want to stick to. What's half? About 12. Could you redesign that sign and just drop it down a little more? We give you a little bit, but...
We do have spec signs. We do, we do not have one that's 12-foot.
Okay.
I believe we do have one. Hold on one second, I can do this.
And, you know, just by looking at your drawing, I know, you know, gasoline prices need to be probably 12 inches tall. You know, there's some certain things, and I know the way your logo would fit, probably got to be a certain dimension.
And another aspect, these, these stores are completely different. You're selling fresh, prepared food.
Okay. So you want to have that on the sign?
It is very important. This is, this is our new brand. We want to sell that brand.
Gotcha. Okay, I understand that.
Just one question on your store on 73rd and Hickman. Notice it has kind of the same drop, probably more so than what you're seeing now. What, what are the dimensions of the signs there? I don't think I see a high one. I don't see a 15.
Off the top of my head, I don't, I don't know the
Do you have a kitchen in, in that store?
We do not.
Are, are those newer signs, Bill? I'm trying to remember, across from the ice arena there.
Ice arena, yeah.
Are, are those newer signs, or has that been there for a while?
Been there for a while, yeah. That's why I asked if there was a kitchen, see?
Right.
But I, I just don't recall that, especially the one on 73rd, being, you know, rocketing into the sky, so that's the reason I'm asking.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, you have somebody in the audience?
They're about 13 feet tall.
Thank you. I thought there would be... Is 13-foot a brand sign for you, or?
We do have an option that's lesser than the 15, but that would not include the kitchen sign, so we would like to seek the variance for the 15-foot sign, so...
Any other questions?
That store does, does not have the kitchen, so...
Okay, I'm curious about something here. So you probably won't have QT Kitchens on the building here in Des Moines?
We will not.
Okay, but what if you had a lower sign, and then you've got QT Kitchens on your building with a different variance?
That brings a valid point. I don't know if I could answer that
Okay.
correctly right now, so I would have to go back to corporate. I'm, I'm not sure that I could
Okay. Do you have the QT Kitchen sign on your store on 22nd Street in West Des Moines?
We do not.
Okay, okay. All right.
And again, I'm not sure that the sign on the building itself fixes it, because
Right.
It, it does sit down in a hole.
I've got you. Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else here to speak in support?
I'm Laura Peters from the Sixth Avenue Corridor. I also live in the Merle Hay neighborhood at 2110 55th Street. So I think between, you know, these two positions, I'm, I'm pretty familiar with some of the signage issues that we're, you know, facing here in the city. We really appreciate that QT, you know, willingly came down. They were initially proposing 17 feet, three inches, which, you know, I think our group was strongly opposed to. And they came down, and then they came down again to the eight feet with one sign. I went around to all of the different QTs around town. Like I said, I went to the one on 73rd there, and I measured that was about 13 feet tall, and, you know, went to even like some come-and-gos, for example, up on Douglas and 70th Street in Urbandale, and that sign is about 12 feet tall, but also probably about 10 feet wide. So, you know, once I, once I was out on that site and I kind of took a look at that sign, and I was thinking about the scale of the cars going by, it was a, my concerns were a bit alleviated with a 15-foot tall sign here at this location. I understand why QT wants to have the QT Kitchens sign incorporated, because certainly we don't have many food options there. I go to QT probably three times a week for lunch to get a deli sandwich, because my other option is McDonald's across the street, you know? So, I understand where they're coming from with that, and we appreciate that they've been willing to work with us on the streetscape. So, our organization is very much in support of what they've proposed with their sign.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else here to speak in support?
Good afternoon. My name is Susan Wells, and I'm with the Cheetum Park Neighborhood Association. I live at 1157 14th Place, and we are in total support of the recommendation for the sign that QT has proposed. We're excited about having them come into our neighborhood. We're excited about the fact that they have been very inclusive and upfront with us about their plans all along, which doesn't always happen. And we're also excited that they're sticking with the, working with not just our neighborhood association, but with the Sixth Avenue Corridor project, which we are part of, and with Riverbend. So we just want to let you know that they have our total support. We're happy with the height of the sign that they lowered it to. We were just given this information about five days ago, and in talking with different members of the organization and neighbors, we're on board with them.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here to speak in support? Anybody here to speak in opposition? Any last questions for staff?
I have one. Mr. Chair.
Okay, Jake?
What's the total square footage of signage between the shorter version and the taller version? To me, they look very similar.
In the actual area? I didn't calculate that. Maybe they can give you that information. The area wasn't an issue, because they weren't exceeding the areas that they earned based on the lot frontage. The challenge, I suppose, became getting that area to fit within the geometric shape that was going to work on the corner, given the setback and so forth, so...
The 15-foot tall sign's three square feet taller, or three square feet wider.
It's clearly, by the setback, they had to go up instead of out, so it makes sense to me.
Yeah, for us, for, from the staff's perspective, it was strictly an issue with scale against the
Sure.
approximate to the property line, so...
Eric, two brief questions. If they just want to do a pole sign, how tall could that potentially be if it just said QT and that's it?
If they did a pole sign, which they can't do, without going back and getting a, a design guideline waiver on the site plan.
Okay.
But if they, the district allows it,
Yeah, yeah.
That would be, they would earn the same area, but they would have to have a 12-foot clearance from grade from the bottom of the cabinet, and they could go as high as 45 feet.
Okay, okay. All right, and if we were inclined to grant the variance based on what's been presented, what they've kind of agreed to with the neighborhood, the one sign doesn't need a variance for height, but the other one would need, what, a seven-foot variance then?
Yes, it, we're looking at it in terms of the, when it's less than 20 feet, it has to be no taller than eight feet, so
Right.
It's the, you know, anything four feet or more than eight feet, which, you know, anything more than 12 feet goes into that variance category.
Okay, so they'd need a three-foot variance then? If it was going to be the 15 feet? Is that right?
Well, it's a, it would be a
Or it would be the
Yeah, it'd be a seven-foot variance, but it would be three feet from being a, an exception.
Okay.
If that's the way you want to look at it, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Hearing done, closes, oh wait a minute. We got, I'm sorry, Larry, what? Let me find out if there's anybody here to speak in opposition first. Anybody here to speak in opposition? Did I? I don't think I did.
Yeah, you did. Yeah, you did.
Okay. Hearing done? We'll give you about, yeah. Kind of informal.
Just in response, Mr. Penn's question regarding the, the height
Sure.
variance, if you're inclined to. The height of the sign is actually 15 feet and half an inch. I just want to make sure that if, if the, if the board was inclined to grant a variance, that we wouldn't have to come back for the half inch. That's all.
How about if we gave you 15-foot, one inch, if we were inclined, just so there's a little space?
I would, I would greatly appreciate that.
Because, you know, that guy out there with his level and his measuring tape, you never know. Oh, you go back 408, they were lower.
All right, eight last questions for staff. All right. Hearing done, close the public portion, then go to board decision.
Mr. Chair, I would move to support the variance as requested.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I would second that with a comment. We, we did have one letter of concern about the proliferation of, you know, tall signage or signage without, signage needing variances. And while this is a monument sign, it's a little bigger one. And, but in practice, with what they're asking for, I don't think we'd be throwing our principles out the door here, because I do want a lower signage in, in our city as well. And I think we need to be heading in that direction to make our neighborhoods look good, but in this case, the neighborhoods support this. I think it's reasonable considering
One thing, though. That letter that was included from
Yeah.
Jason Fulham, he actually withdrew it this morning, so it wasn't provided in front of
Oh, he actually withdrew the letter?
Yeah. So it, I'd already forwarded it onto the board, I forgot to mention it.
Okay, well, I am still a fan of lowering signage in principle, but in practice, I like this one, so I'll, I'll second the motion.
That was my fault, because I passed everything in the record.
Just want to give one clarification, maybe from staff. I see the installation of two 17.25 foot, and the motion was as presented by the applicant, so I just want to make sure, because I heard 15 feet. So I want to make sure that
I think it'll be 15 feet
One inch, for one side.
Five.
One side.
For one side, and the other one will be only the eight-foot tall.
The other one isn't under
Under consideration anymore.
So you do want to put a
So it's just one
Limit it to the one sign.
I would accept that.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Yeah. We'll limit it to one sign with a maximum height of 15-point, what, feet, do you call it?
Half an inch.
I'm going to say 15-foot, one inch, so you've got a little room.
You got that, Bird? All right. Then moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six to nothing. Well, I'd rather that than a 45-foot tall pole sign. Folks, why don't we take a, a four-minute break? Be back here at 3:50, okay?
I had no, I had no choice.
Aye. Call the meeting back to order. Item 16 is an exception in the vicinity of 3944 East University.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, the exception would allow for construction of a 1,500 square foot of accessory structures on a lot under one acre in area. And the proposed structure would be 21 feet in height. Really, the main point of discussion today is the building materials for the garage. We've recommended approval of the accessory structure. We just would rather they use materials that are compatible with a single-family residential use. Here's the footprint of the building. Hopefully it shows up, but it's a, it's a 1,360 square foot building. It would be in addition to an existing 140-foot square foot shed. So they would have 1,500 square feet of total accessory structure. Here's a picture of the building that they're proposing. It'd be 21 feet tall. They're proposing the corrugated metal siding and the same material for the roof. This is the facade that actually faced East 40th Street. So they are proposing a pedestrian door and two windows. That is a positive. The north facade and then the west facade would have a pedestrian door as well. We did receive one comment card back. It was in support. Again, our recommendation is for approval. We just feel that, given the residential character of the neighborhood, that they should construct it with building materials such as horizontal lap siding and asphalt shingles that match the single-family dwelling. So let's go through these conditions quickly. One, they, before a building permit can be issued, they need to combine these two parcels. Right now, the subject property is comprised of two separate parcels. The house is on the southern parcel. The accessory building would be on the northern parcel. As you know, the zoning ordinance prohibits people from constructing an accessory structure on a property unless there is already a permitted primary use on that property. So before anything can get built, they do need to combine the properties. Two, they comply with the building code. Three, they use the lap siding and shingles that match the dwelling. And then four, five, and six are standard conditions. Any questions?
Don't think so. Thanks, Bert. Appicent, representative applicant?
My name is Ben Douglas. I'm with Bloom Builders. We're constructing the building for Mr. Rhodes here, Charles Rhodes. The only thing we, I would like to comment on is the, is the metal roofing that we had proposed with the building. It is designer steel, 40-year paint, and because of the number of trees on the property, which Charles will get into in a bit, it will not deteriorate as fast as the shingles would with curling up and that with sap, et cetera. On the siding. Here, all on this side, on this end and this end, does initially, for a couple of months, have a designer panel steel up three foot high. And then Charles is planning to brick, will brick that up. So three sides will be bricked up three foot high and then metal above that. So we were hoping we could do metal above the, the brick and on the back side, which will have a designer wainscote also back there. But the, the problem with horizontal siding is that we have to add plywood or OSB and then on the, in order to apply, so you have another pass, you have more cost involved. And then on the roof, it's the same thing. You have to increase the load on your trusses from 34 and a 5 to 3010 and a 10, 3010 and a 5, assuming there's not sheet rock on the ceiling. And you have to put your purlin spacing at 16 inches instead of two foot. So there are some costs. And then plywood or OSB decking and felt paper or something underneath the steel, like you would normally do for, for shingles or steel. Now, I might comment that we do 20 to 30 residential house roofs a year with steel over one layer of shingles. And I know that Mr. Rhodes is planning down the road, when this shingle deteriorates, to do a steel roof on his house. In that case, they would match. Now, I don't know what, you know, that's for you folks to decide how you want to interpret that. Then the properties together, he's got the.
I got a purchase agreement from this, Blackburne, Rookery is doing it, and it should be finalized here in a few days. I'm going to combine both lots together. About the, you know, where I live in the Grayswood area, and there's a lot of black oak, excuse me, black walnut trees, and I'm not cutting those down. They're about 10 feet in front of the garage, on the side of the garage. I'm not cutting them down. My neighbors won't let me cut them down because they like that area. It's a Grayswood area, they like the trees there. We all know that black walnut does sap mid-June, July, and that sap will destroy shingles bad because it's toxic and depending on the rainfall. So I think keeping it metal sides that I, with the texture, I can pyro wash it if it gets too bad, really sap. I can pyro wash it, but I'm not cutting the trees down whatsoever. I got five black walnut trees there, and some are 100 years old. So I want to leave that. I just think putting siding and shingles is going to leave more of a problem down the road.
Okay. Questions? No.
Yeah, Ben and Mr. Rhodes, could you guys put the profile drawing of the building back on the projector there?
This one or?
No, that's, that's, that's your planned view. I'd, I'd like to have your, your elevation, I guess I would call it. So, so what you're talking about is this, this red-colored, three-foot-tall, on three sides, you actually have real brick?
Yes, I've matched in the brick with my house and the color.
Okay. And then when the brick ends, is there like a little cornice or something that?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So it's kind of drip out over that? And then the only side that won't would be what, the north backside?
Poppy line, yeah, it'd be on the west side.
On the west side. And then what's on the west side for your neighbors then, if, if they're not going to see your nice brick? Is there?
No, they're not.
Trees or a garage or what do they have over there?
It's just a long, yeah, it's kind of not, we, it's, there's trees, a row of trees. There's a lot of trees on, on the.
All right. So you're going to propose to do it on the three sides that have the most visibility? Is that the idea?
Yes, 40th you see on the backside, frontside.
And what's, what's the height of the sidewalls before you hit the eve?
It's 16 foot.
16.
And you need six inches for concrete, you need 15 inches for a standard radius on a 12-by-14 door. In order to get a camper in, you need a 14-foot high door.
Okay. All right. Because that's kind of what I'm after. This says you want to store antique cars and a tractor in there, which.
Yeah, I did a car for each of my kids, or fully restored.
Okay. Which that's near and dear to my heart, but we usually don't need garages of that height.
It's for a camper.
Okay.
I'd be retired, I'm thinking about retire, I'm down to Branson. I go down for four or five months.
Now you're really making me jealous. Okay. But you have no intent to use this for any business purpose? You're not a contractor? You don't do construction work? You're not going to store any commercial vehicles in there?
Nope.
It's just all for your hobby?
Hobby, use only.
Okay. All right. Maybe Bill and I can come over and check it out. Okay. All right. Those are my only questions. Thank you.
1954 Corvette.
One of the first years.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd just like to. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else here to speak in support? Anybody here to speak in opposition? Any last questions for staff?
Quiet group.
Hearing none, close the public portion, go to board decision then. I'm not an arborist, but black walnuts cause that much trouble.
I just chop them down. I mean, not, not big ones, but little saplings.
This is, this is kind of a unique area, and there are, there's a lot of trees around there. It's not, it's not like a residential neighborhood that a lot of you might be familiar with. You've got the storage company behind there that, that's been before's before. I think that in this case, it's probably appropriate to let him do his design. That's, that's not what I would normally do, but in this particular area, I think it would be okay. Have my approval. I would hate to see those big walnut trees be cut down. And you do have a lot of trees in that neighborhood. So.
So are, Lena, would you have concerns with, that it'd be metal siding and a metal roof? You're not concerned about?
I really don't have concern in this particular area, just because of what's, of what's around there.
Right.
It's a, it's an improvement to the neighborhood. It's an absolute improvement.
So if item three for staff recommendation was taken out, maybe replaced with, you'd have a three-foot-high, I don't know what you call it, the wains.
It needs to be brick.
Why not as, as described in the site or in the.
Right.
Diagram?
Right.
You guys go with that, Bert?
Well, the diagram doesn't show the brick.
Yeah, it doesn't show the brick.
I want to see the brick, because that's to me.
On three sides? Is that good enough?
I kind of like it on all four sides, but, because I think there will be houses next door to you.
Bert, can, can, can you show us the overhead?
The aerial, there's just one house here oriented towards East University. I don't think there'll ever be another house.
Right.
In the backyard here.
Okay. So he'd be covering it on the north, south, and then west side, but not the east?
East and not the west.
East and not the west.
Where's his house right now?
No. He, he wants to do the street side of it, don't you? With brick?
I thought it was on one.
Isn't he doing brick on one and paint on wainscote on the other three? It's the north half of that original.
He'd be doing brick on three sides, did you say?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, brick on three sides.
It's the north half of an original Broad-Air lot that's.
Right.
Is that correct? Is this, this is where the lot?
Yeah, lot on the corner, right there.
Okay.
The garage would go right here.
So.
So no brick on the west?
On the west side.
West side.
That's okay.
Is that correct?
I can see that.
Yeah, okay.
Because there's, there's.
Nothing but a story.
He's going to own that lot. You're going to own that next lot.
Yeah, I'm in the process of it. It should be somewhere within a week.
Okay.
Does that make sense, Bert?
Yeah.
Okay. If, if, if we get to that, we're just having board deliberation now, right? Okay.
So right now, we're modifying the condition three?
Probably what's going to happen.
I, I would modify it by saying, three-foot brick on all sides of building except the west side.
Okay. Okay.
And steel roof?
Steel roof.
That's okay. So, so we don't have to address that.
And just scratch that match to dwelling?
Basically scratching three. It doesn't match now, but his dwelling can match it later. I mean, we're just letting him do a steel roof.
Any accessory building shall be constructed with, with brick.
Yep.
Siding three foot up, three foot, three foot from ground?
Three foot length.
We just call it wainscote.
Right.
I think that. People that issue permits.
Wainscote, okay.
On southeast and north sides.
The southeast and north sides.
And we don't have to say anything else about metal siding then? Okay.
And a steel roof would be acceptable. So I would move staff recommendations by striking number, or amending number three to say, any accessory building shall be constructed with brick wainscoting on the southeast and north sides of the building, and a steel roof would be allowed.
Okay. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Then moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand, say aye. Motion carries six to nothing, so.
Okay. Is that good?
He cites my stomping ground, I'll check it out. Item 17, special permit and variance at 4006 Merle Hay Road. We've got correspondence on that.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, item number 17 is a request for a special permit for barbed wire that would be used for security purposes. The proposal would allow for the existing chain link of barbed wire fence that surrounds the water tower along Merle Hay Road. It would allow it to be replaced. The current fence actually surrounds the entire property, but it's pretty much right up along the front property line along Merle Hay Road. So the applicant is actually proposing to move it back 20 feet. So it would be set back 20 feet from the front property line. Staff, wanting to take it just a little bit further and have it be at least 25 feet back from the front property line, since the 25 feet is the typical front yard setback for commercial properties. Here's a picture of the site. Familiar with the site? There's a water tower and then two cell towers on the same parcel. It's just in front of the Sears store at Merle Hay Mall. And the consent map, we had one card in support, and then the letter from the Merle Hay neighborhood in support as well. As I mentioned, staff does believe they've satisfied the criteria necessary for granting a special permit, since it's a water tower. We believe that there are unique circumstances, that the barbed wire is justified for protecting the city's water supply. So we've recommended approval, just subject to two conditions. One, that the fence be set back 25 feet from the east front property line. Again, the applicant is proposing 20 feet. I haven't had a chance to talk to them to find out whether they're in agreement with 25 versus 20, but I'll let them address it shortly. And then number two. And then number two, the fence should be constructed in accordance with the fence permit. So, any questions?
One brief question, we may have covered this and other requests, but barbed wire to me means like, you know, cow fence wire, it doesn't mean concertina wire, doesn't mean spiral wire, doesn't mean razor wire. Is that your understanding?
I think all of it would fall under that.
So all of that could be called barbed wire?
I think so.
The kind of stuff around a prison is concertina wire, which is spiral bound, which I would not want.
Yeah, what they're proposing is an eight foot tall.
Well, that's, as Linda said, she thinks barbed wire is just a little spiky things like a cattle fence.
Yeah, and that's what they're proposing here.
Uh huh.
Three strands of wire with the little spiky.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear about that, so we don't.
Little spiky things.
Right.
The new fence would be a black vinyl clad fence, which would be an improvement from the existing galvanized chain link fence, so. Any other questions?
Thanks, Bert. Applicant, representative of the applicant? Where's Bill Stowe?
He's busy.
Oh.
I got the short straw.
It doesn't mean we don't like you.
Kyle Danley, I'm the engineering supervisor at Des Moines Water Works, 3526 Northwest 8th Lane. As he's explained, the existing fence is in dire need of repair.
I'd say so.
Examples, for security reasons, anesthetic reasons, here's on Merle Hay.
Yep.
And so we have budgeted to replace that fence.
Yep.
Here's another one where it's actually leaning on the backside.
Sure.
And so we've worked with the neighborhood association and sharing our plans with them of what we wanted to do and also working with them to potentially put in some planners at the entrance to that. To improve the aesthetics of that. What we're proposing is much like we did on the Wachinski tank on the south side a couple of years ago where we put in the black vinyl fence. I don't know if you can see on this one where you zoom in.
Sure.
The barbed wire is also is the straight line, not the razor wire or the, and it is coated, vinyl coated too, which was a huge improvement on that fence also.
How's the driveway look down there?
Good.
What'd you expect him to say, bad?
We did set the, the property fence, the front fence line back at, on Merle Hay to the 20 foot.
Okay.
And much of that was to get more sight distance on the front and things. We chose 20 foot because of the structure that is located right here, trying to keep the structure, concrete structure inside the perimeter of that fence line and also putting the fence on the top of the, much on the top of the hill to make it easier for mowing and things like that. And so that was why the 20 foot was determined instead of 25 foot. We were not aware of that setback distance at the time when we did this, but wanted to move it back for aesthetic purposes.
What, what is the concrete structure?
It's a vault for draining the tank for maintenance purposes, there's a drain line.
So that needs securing too?
Yeah.
It would be ideal to be in there if, if at all possible.
Right.
But we did try to move it, also moving it in 25 more feet, there's an existing 24 inch pipeline that goes here. Moving it in closer would make any maintenance on that pipeline, if you had a leak or something to dig it up, would make it more difficult because of the size of the equipment you'd have to bring in and the swing on that. We may end up having to tear the fence down in order to fix the water main, so.
Can you scrunch it in on any of the other sides?
There's a lot of utilities and things, so we would prefer to keep it out there on the other sides if we can.
So all the way around, you feel like you have it placed where it needs to be placed?
Yes, we put it on where the existing fence is now and we moved it in.
Right.
Entrance and along Merle Hay, we moved the fence in.
And Kyle, I'm, I'm curious, with the fence on the east side as you're proposing, are you setting it back further anyway than it is now or would you have the same alignment?
No, it's getting set back.
It is already then?
Probably 15 feet or more.
Versus how it sits now?
Yes.
Okay.
It's coming back quite a ways from where it is now.
What about the north side, did that come down any further?
There's a vacant lot on the north side right now. And with the trees being there, I think without tearing the trees down to move the fence in, we probably have to cut trees down in order to do that.
They've looked at every option.
And that fence on the north is on your lot line directly?
Yes.
So you don't have to do any mowing or maintenance north on the outside of the fence then?
Correct.
Okay.
Here's the picture.
Yep.
We're moving it more up in this area.
Okay.
More on the top of the hill from where it is currently.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Questions? I think we've done a pretty good job so far.
Scrunch it in as much as you can.
That's right. Thank you. Anybody else here to speak in support? I was going to say, you guys have been sitting here.
There we go. Got to give Jason a chance to say something.
If you insist, Bill. Jason Pulliam, 2113 52nd Street, here speaking on behalf of the Merle Hay Neighborhood Association. Thanks for the opportunity. I just first and foremost want to thank Kyle and Katie and Water Works staff for working with the neighborhood on this. They've done a really good job. As Kyle mentioned, we are planning to put in some perennial gardens right outside the front gates, kind of alongside the driveway. We think that will help enhance the overall appearance of the site, also will tie in with efforts to beautify that corridor. So can't say enough about how good Water Works has been to work with on this project, so we're fully in support. Any questions?
I'd say we've done pretty good with corporations and companies working with the neighborhood groups, you know, quick trip, you know?
On the right track here today.
That's what we make, it makes our job a lot easier, I can tell you that, so.
Thanks for your consideration.
Thanks, Jason. Anybody else here to speak in support? Joanne, you going to be quiet or? You've been here this whole time.
No. Don't remind her.
She can sit back and poke Jason to get up here.
Anybody here to speak in opposition? Any last questions for staff? Hearing none, we'll close the public portion, go to board decision then.
What are the staff recommendations? With amendment to the first one to change it from 25 feet to 20 feet, isn't that what the applicant needs because of that little thing you described?
And, and in essence, the plan as presented is really what we'd be approving, where they've shown the fence alignments, they've showed the three strand wire, they've noted it's black, if, you know, as long as it's some substantial compliance, conformance with the plan as presented.
Bert, is that easier for you to do?
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Who's going to second that?
I'll second.
All right, because it's, any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Boy, that was an express route, guys, that got done in a hurry. Good job.
Well put together.
I was going to mention that because of the number of cases we have this month, a lot of times we like to be able to do a little more back and forth with the appellants, so find out whether, where they're at with our recommendation, but we just haven't had the time to do it, so I apologize.
Okay.
We could probably recommend a few other ones that would have been on the consent.
That's okay.
That's all right. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Kyle.
Item 18 is a variance in exception in the vicinity of 2515 Dean Avenue.
Yes, and I'll pass the cards around here. This is a narrow, I would say narrow, relatively narrow in terms of the size that you normally see for industrial property, but certainly a fairly sizable property. This is the existing facility for the Johnson Brothers, is it Iowa Beverage, Iowa Wine and Beverage location. They're looking to expand clear over to an area that would be directly in line with East 26th Street, right here. They wouldn't be pushing west for right now. I know they do own additional property, maybe for another project in the future, but right now we're dealing with the Goldenrod Hatch area, if you can see that on the map there. As you can see, it's almost paved, lot line to lot line as well, and besides the building, they use this area currently for angled parking. It really doesn't meet the, the current dimensions provisions, so this is that example of the expansion is triggering the full conformance of the code under the provisions for off street parking and setback. The proposed layout for the expansion, they are, they are complying, so I did want to point that out. I might have, Bert, now zoom out because this is a bigger. So the, the addition is right here, onto this area right here. So this is the, I'm sorry, this is the existing, but you can see they have this angled parking where it loads both directions in a one-way circulation. They want to basically leave that intact and then with the addition area, they would add more parking spaces that would conform to our standards. So everything they're adding would conform. So as we get over here, this is the addition here and they'll have more loading coming off the east side of that. But they would have, they would continue to have that one-way pattern, but it would just load toward the building and then they would provide the setback area here. They would also restore several individual drive approaches that are still in place as part of this project, so, you know, you'll start to see more of a cohesiveness, I think, to this point by having the limited access points. It won't look like there's all these little drive approaches along the street side and it won't be that, won't be as confusing. They're eliminating some areas that are still currently used for access as well. I'm going to give you a little sense of what's in front of the building here now. I have to zoom back. So it is right up, there is some trees in the parkway in front of the building. Immediately in front of their main entrance, there is some opportunity for more trees in the parkway. We're also proposing as a recommendation, some additional interior islands in that area to sort of beef up the landscaping a little bit. This is on the east end of the building. This bill, this is actually a building that would come down to make, make way for the addition, so. It just gives you a sense of the skate around there. Getting back to this, again, with this number of spaces, if this was built new, we would typically require one per, one interior island per 20 spaces, so we're suggesting as part of this project that they add three interior islands in order to leave that existing parking configuration and we don't think that'll take enough spaces away from them to put them in jeopardy of their minimum parking requirement, so. Other than that, we're, we're in favor of this. They will still have to comply with site plan regulations. I do know already that they may have a hard time meeting the open space, but that's not something that the board is charged with looking at, it's a site plan standard, so we can actually consider that administratively. I'll show you the, there was one.
One's, one's.
I think there was one in opposition and two in favor.
And I think we've, we've seen the cards and come around on that.
Thanks, Eric. Applicant, representative of the applicant?
Good afternoon, I'm Gary Verwer. No, you're fine. I'm Gary Verwer with Johnson Brothers, 2515 Dean Avenue, and I have Barry Jaeger from Jaeger Construction here with me. We're looking to expand the building relatively as fast, as fast as we possibly can now. We want to get everything up front. We spoke with the Fairground Neighborhood Association, Sharon Fuller, met with her and a couple of other representatives from Fairground Neighborhood Association and walked them through all of our plans and they said they fully supported it, wasn't even going to show up today, so. We've talked with the other neighbors, the other businesses along Dean. We, we actually own two, two city blocks there, so we go from 2515 Dean clear through 2615 Dean. We had a building that we took down the first of this year. We plan on taking down the old Ryco Manufacturing Warehouse that actually sticks out further in the street than any other buildings, scaling that back and then building to our current facilities. We've been on the east side of Des Moines since 1985. We have no plans on leaving there, we like it there, we have a lot of people in that direct neighborhood that work for us. Statewide, we have 150 employees and 50 are on site every day. So that's kind of what we got going on.
Gary, are you okay with the staff recommendations with the three little landscaped islands? That's okay with you? Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you. Anybody else here to speak in support? Anybody here to speak in opposition? Any last questions for staff? Hearing none, we'll close the public portion, go to board decision.
Well.
I'd like, I'd just like to say that I'm happy to see the expansion on the east side and you are an employer and, you know, being an east sider, I, I appreciate the fact that you're willing to invest in the community and you're, you're, you're a good employer.
Keep going with that.
I was going to say, yeah. Could be a retirement tree.
And that Dean Avenue corridor with the U.P. and Switch Yard there, that, those are narrow lots for any kind of, you know, sizable, commercial or industrial, it's hard to fit in there the way it is. And if they're willing to make this work, I think we should support that. I don't see this changing to residential or building apartments in there, single family homes. I want to keep businesses in there, not have those old manufacturing places with windows broken out.
Mm-hmm.
You know, the new fire department building is great and if you guys expand, we'll just keep making that corridor look nicer.
I'll stay up.
I'll second.
Then moved and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand, say aye. Motion carries six to nothing. Gets better than, as the afternoon wears on, doesn't it?
I'm sorry, Lower Beaver. This property has a little bit of a history with the Board of Adjustment since 1964, if you read the staff report. There was a few cases over time that pertain to usage for a daycare center, a couple of different times it was denied, I think when since 64 and then granted later, several years later, but, so it had some history as a commercial property. See if I can get it to focus, it's a little blurry. The scale of that part of the map is a little hard to read, so. But this property is now wanting to come, it has a, like a U-shaped driveway currently. If you look at this photo, it has a number of cars parked and then you can look at it also from the north. And it comes right into this, a shared drive entrance with their neighbor and this kind of gives you the layout of the pavement. So there's this shared driveway here, that entrance that you saw in the first picture that comes around with the U-shaped driveway. They are now looking to extend back from the site into this area. So if you see the area that was, that's the red perimeter, so they already exceed the provision that limits them to 25%. So they already exceed the provision that limits them to 25 percent. But the part, they want to pave this apron back here. The part that's really in effect here is this, you know, squaring off this curve within the front yard area. And so that's pushing it even further over that allowance from what it is now. It's a variance provision which causes the criteria that they have to meet to be the hardship criteria. And from staff's review of this, we do not feel that their, their need to maintain this as a single-family residence, that this is critical in keeping that use of the property. So we don't believe we could support granting a variance in this case. So we're recommending denial.
Questions? Thanks Eric.
I'll show you the.
No, is that map, you?
If I can find it here, I have two hours of paperwork down.
The applicant, representative of the applicant?
I think this one's red. It's just from some reason it's another.
Maybe double shaded red?
Yeah.
Hello, my name is Joseph Mayers. I reside at 3911 41st Street. The reason that this whole thing was brought about is my father that lives in the house, his health is deteriorating. And the doctor's saying he will be in a wheelchair in the next six months. Based on construction restraints, you can't do asphalt after November. So we're trying to get this done prior to him being in a wheelchair. So when that happens, that transition goes easier. As far as the square footage goes, we can, I mean, I'm willing to work with whatever we have to do to get this done. The recommendation by the staff was to remove the U-shaped driveway and put in two parallel driveways. And that's an option, but it's a very expensive option. Another option I would go with is if this does get denied for the variance, is can we still just resurface the driveway there because it is deteriorated and cracked and buckled? So I guess I leave that to you guys and you guys can discuss what you'd like to discuss on this matter.
Is there, is there a reason you need it on that side? Is there a door or something?
That, that's the side of the house he lives on. And we already have a deck approved by the zoning committee to build the ramp, having the ramp go off to the south side of the property. And that's why we'd like the driveway right there, so it's easier for him to get out of the house into the car. The way the property's set up now, you couldn't do, you can't do a ramp to the west side. So we had to do it to the south side.
Could staff help you put the plan view of the house and the driveway up there?
Yeah, I want to take a good look.
Yeah. So, so where had your father been parking his vehicle? Did he have a car?
Yeah, yes.
Himself? So, so how would he normally park and get in his side of the house?
Is it a duplex?
It, it was originally duplex when they, they granted the daycare, one side was a daycare, one side was a living side. But we own both sides and we live in both sides. They're all, they're, it's all connected.
Okay.
That's my father's Cadillac in the, in the picture there. And that's the deck that's there now, but we need to remove that and build a ramp.
So if you build a ramp, then why can't he still pull up on the U-shaped driveway there and get out and get in his car?
It's grass on the side of that deck. And when we build that deck to allow for the ramp, that driveway doesn't meet up.
So why can't you pour a little more concrete from the ramp to the driveway to make it link up?
I think the original plan was just to make it easier accessible for him. Like I said, I, you can see in this picture here, my black truck is parked beside the house. And that's the area that we'd like to pave for his car to go there instead of my truck. Any other questions?
Questions?
You, you mentioned something about if you replaced this circular driveway, you would need permission. Is, that might be a staff question, but I think you can't replace that.
What I have now, they said, is over the 25 percent of the, of my front yard allowance. Can I remove what's there and replace what's there legally? I don't know, is that a staff question?
Well, we're probably talking about two separate things here.
Okay.
I can answer that when you bring the staff.
Okay.
I, I'd like to get the driveway on the side, the south side of the house. That's the ultimate goal here.
Right. And, and you could do that by right if you got a construction permit, if you didn't have this U-shaped driveway in there. So you're asking us to just let you do loads more concrete and you're not really taking anything away. You're just adding more.
Correct.
So, and that's kind of.
It's to the side of the house. I mean, I know they consider it the front yard. And the adjoining driveway is also getting replaced by the neighbor. He's also doing it at the same time I am.
Any other questions? Thank you. Is there anybody else here to speak in support? Anybody here to speak in opposition? Now, any last questions for staff? Do they have to take the old concrete out?
Can he just replace that circular driveway?
Replacing it requires the same relief. He can overlay it or repair it with, you know, new asphalt to make it better surface.
But if he completely tears it out to repour it, even in the same alignment, now it's okay.
Yeah. When he removes it, then he needs to put it back in performance or get relief. This didn't come to us as a, as an accommodation type request.
Right.
But if you're inclined to approve it, I almost would approach it in that fashion and make it contingent upon his particular situation so that it would have to be removed later. Now, I know that's hard for us to enforce, but that way, you know, if there's some, if you feel there's some temporary need to accommodate the current owner, that would be one way to approach it.
But, but if he wanted to, okay, so if he builds his deck out the front and he's got a ramp and he needed to pour like two feet to match up to the existing driveway?
Out in this area right here. Yeah, I mean, any, one square foot over what he's got now is triggering this relief.
Okay.
So.
All right.
Unless he's removing at other portions.
So, yeah, I mean, right.
And what I'm hearing from him is that it's, that might be a financial burden to remove that, but so would having him remove it later on, you know, after they move from the premises or.
Okay.
Bert, can you show me the county records on it? Is it, is it zoned for duplex? Is it, I mean, it kind of looks like a duplex. And if we put more cement there, then it's.
Just so you know, the R-160 provision, see if I can get the right.
I don't know that came in like.
Yeah, so it's R-160.
Really?
But R-160 was adopted in 1996 and allowed duplexes that were there as a matter of right. So those continue to be permitted uses as long as, and even if they have a gap in usage, they're still permitted use. So it's not a, it's not a legal non-conforming use. It's actually a permitted use because it was established at that point in time, so.
Yeah.
Now that they've.
They're using it as a single.
Now that they've converted it to a single family, I don't think there's really any going back.
Okay.
If it went vacant, it wouldn't lose the rights as a duplex had it been left.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Thanks Eric. We'll close the public portion, go to board decision then.
Well, I might throw out one thing here. There was recently a gentleman that spoke here as a member of the community who doesn't necessarily like tall signs. He doesn't like front yard parking, and neither do I. This is a single-family home. We have a lot of paving here. If we needed an accommodation and a few square feet of concrete to be poured to match up to a ramp, I'd have no problem with it. But we're going to add, we've got, already got a drive on the left. We've already got a U-shaped drive. Now we're going to add a third drive. I think we're going beyond the intent of keeping the character of the neighborhood in check here. We've got cars parked all over the front yard, in the drive, you know, and for all intents and purposes, this is a single family. This is one family. And I have a lot of respect for people who need accommodations, but I, we're, we'd probably be giving, giving away the farm on this one, in my opinion, if we went with what the applicant's proposing.
I agree with you. I have trouble seeing that truck parked on the ground, though.
Well, I don't know how legal that is. Sorry to pick on him, but I don't know how legal.
We actually haven't been enforced on it.
It may not be in his, is it?
If it's in the front yard area, then we would.
Right. Is side yard parking allowed?
Yeah.
Right. Okay.
Probably shouldn't use the mic when I say that stuff.
But he wouldn't, but he could park it on that side. He, he could pour a really nice driveway on that east side of the parcel if he took out that U. He could still have the one on the left probably, or seek a very much smaller variance here. The only reason we have the U-shaped driveway is we had drop-off for kids. We don't have that anymore. And tearing out concrete is a heck of a lot cheaper than when we usually make people pour more. You can rent your own saw cut machine, get a sledge. I, I know it's hard. We've all probably done it at some time or another. Maybe we could give them time to do it, but I'm, I'm just not a big.
I'd be more inclined to do that. Give them time to do it.
Right. Right. But I'm not a fan of just more parking for more parking.
No, I'm not either.
And I don't see any, I mean, I understand his hardship, but the rules that we have to follow.
Right.
Is, is different. We're looking at.
Right.
You know, does it have to be there?
Yeah, okay.
Can I get some clarification from staff? I thought I heard that if he tore out that circular driveway, he could keep the two driveways on either side.
He would still be limited to the 25 percent.
Right.
So depending on whether or not that stays within the 25 percent.
Right. It could be a single lane drive or rather than.
It's conceivable if he does it, reduces the pavement to keep it within the 25 percent.
I, I feel like if we want to head that direction to explain it or put on paper, might be kind of difficult for us to articulate. I don't know if we'd need to just kind of draw what we want and let staff help figure that out. If, if we're heading in a specific direction, I don't know.
I think we're, we're headed to let him put the concrete in there, but we got to do something with that circular portion.
Yeah.
And how we do it over, should we do it over time? I'm guessing probably, certain amount of time. So I, I think the first question is, if we go ahead and grant the variance to put the, the drive up along the south side, and we, and it's, hopefully it's 25 percent. But we don't know, right?
Well, basically you're saying hopefully it's 25 percent to meet the, if taking away what you want him to take away at this point.
Right. Yeah. And, and we'll take away the stuff that's there, what do you think, over a year, year and a half? No?
Oh, I'd probably say by this time next year then. If he gets to do his pour this fall yet while the weather's good, that's what we're after, then by this time next year, he ought to be able to get the other taken out.
Yeah.
Because you don't.
Good with something like that?
Yeah.
Okay. That makes, that makes it easy for me.
So what you're saying is I can pour my south side driveway and remove the U and I have a year to remove the U?
Yeah.
As long as that south side driveway doesn't exceed his 25 percent? Or do we got to give an allowance specifically for that?
Um.
Are we kind of giving the variance for?
I don't see that if it's just the south side driveway.
That he.
That it's going to go over the 25 percent.
Can you put the picture back up?
Yeah, we just, yeah.
And did the, did the applicant have his own drawing or site plan of what he wants to do?
Um, no.
Or was it kind of how you drew it?
Sketch that was, this is kind of, gives you the sense of everything there.
Right.
You can actually see the car on the other part.
So, so within a year, we'd want, where the Cadillac?
So what you're indicating is that you want him to just have a straight driveway on the south side of the house.
Yep.
Right.
To accommodate the ramp connection.
Correct.
And then ultimately lose.
Yep.
This remaining tail of the U-shaped driveway.
Right.
And keeping that within, I don't see a problem keeping that within 25 percent.
Okay.
Given the width of the lot.
And Eric, I'm not sure if that really matters because right now the variance is for 1,200, 10 square feet over the calculated amount for the 25 percent. So really what they're looking at is if it goes over 25 percent, there's still variance in front of the board, just a much smaller.
Yes.
Request.
Yeah. But what, what I'm hearing, yeah, you could give him a higher percentage than the 25 percent in terms of what's ultimately left over.
Yeah, and that's, I think it's going to be hard for us to figure out, isn't it, right here with what we got?
So you're, you still need to give him a variance to let him do the whole thing right now. And then.
Okay.
As a condition, you would be asking him to cut it back to the 25.
So you give him the variance he's requested, but then we give him X time to remove what we're talking about.
I think that way, yeah.
Okay.
And, and you know, we're still going to be granting it over the 25 percent, but at least we've got a, a goal of getting the rest of that stuff in front.
If you just want to make the condition that he remove everything west, you know, west of a certain point, you could do that too. Not make it a 20.
Yeah, west between the two existing drive accesses. And he can't make his drive accesses any wider than they are now to the street and.
So what I'm hearing you is that they're eliminating everything from the south end of the house to this other driveway.
Right.
Right.
I think we can leave it at that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because his ramp will come out toward the, his ramp comes out to the south there and then would hit that new pad.
Right.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay.
And the other thing I do want to point out is if it's going this wide, if he's wanting a wider approach, that would take a permit.
And that's kind of what I'm after. The approach isn't any wider as it hits the street, but I don't know if we have a flare or a cut than where his ramp comes out. You know, that might have to be designed. Can we have staff work with him a little on that?
Just require a permit, not permit staff would.
Yeah.
As long as you kind of know what our intent is.
Set a standard for the, the approach.
Yeah. Because I don't want to measure it out in detail here.
No, I think, yeah, you're right. If we grant it and with stipulation they got to remove the stuff to the east, we're in good shape. Okay? So you want to put that in the form of a motion, Mel?
Oh, yeah. Okay. So we're going to grant the requested variance. He'll still have to get all permits necessary, et cetera. But within one year from the date of the variance approval, he'll have to remove existing concrete to the west of the new drive until it meets the existing drive on the west end.
To the north.
Or to, to the north, I'm sorry. Yeah. Is that clear enough, Bert?
Yeah.
Okay. If that's clear enough to my colleagues.
Okay. We're here in second.
Second?
Thank you. I thought we were going to get quiet here. We moved in second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand, say aye. Motion carries six to nothing. You got it.
All right. Hope he feels better.
You bet. Thanks for being flexible with us, too. Last but not least, item 21, conditional use permit in vicinity of 210 Court Avenue. And we have a little correspondence on that as well.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, the request is for a conditional use permit which would allow a new tavern along Court Avenue. The subject property is 210 Court Avenue. It's located between the Court Center complex, which has four taverns and one restaurant, and then located on the east side is this Baraco Tavern with the Shorty's Tavern in the basement of that structure. It's on, between Second Avenue and Third Street and the Court Avenue Entertainment District. Here's the sketch that the applicant is proposing. You can see it's a long and very narrow building. They're proposing a patio on the west side of the building within alley right of it. To do the patio, they'll need to get either a sidewalk cafe permit or a lease through the city's real estate division. Here's this photo of the building. You may know it as the former Judge Roy Bean's Restaurant Building. It's been vacant for a few years now. And then this photo is looking down the alley where the new patio would be. It would kind of line up with Legends Patio just across the alley to the west. And this Baraco Restaurant to the east, the tavern, they also have a small sidewalk cafe patio in front of their building. And then also in front of your chairs, in addition to those two letters, you also have the police reports for the 500-foot radius for the past 12 months. As you'll see, there were 659 police calls within that 12, or police reports or incidences within that 12-month period. So it really is a high concentration of police activity for that area. And then this final one is the consent map. We have those letters in support and then some cards from condo owners at that building there. Staff looked at this from the perspective that, yeah, Court Avenue is an entertainment district. It definitely has benefits to the city. However, we feel that adding another tavern to this specific block could be detrimental. Back in 2011, the Downtown Community Alliance had prepared the Court Avenue nightlife audit. Back in 2011, the Downtown Community Alliance had prepared the Court Avenue nightlife audit. And one of the findings was that the city needs to have these entertainment districts, but be sure that there's not large concentrations of taverns on any one block face within that district. And on this specific block face, we have four taverns plus the Legends Restaurant within this Court Center building adjacent to the west. And then you also have the two taverns, Shorty's and Sporaco, and the building adjacent to the east. So, and we do have concerns with adding another tavern to this block. One of the biggest, I guess, conflicts we see is we always hear from the police department that there's a lot of congestion on the sidewalks, especially at the 2 o'clock closing time when everybody's pouring out of these bars. So that's one more, a little more rationale for why we want to have these taverns spread out more in our entertainment districts. So we didn't feel that this location has satisfied the criteria necessary for granting the conditional use permit. Just point out too, that this is Zone C3B, which doesn't require any variances or any separation distances. So that's not up for debate today. So really all they need is the conditional use permit, but staff has recommended denial of it just based over the high concentrations of taverns on this block face and the known high concentration of police incidences over the past year for this area. So. Any questions?
But, and this may not even be relevant, but I thought we were having discussions with the police department about not having patios. Does that enter into that? Because I see they have a request for a patio.
I know. There's been some discussion with the police on Third Street about the patios, the Komodo Club and, I believe, maybe.
Yeah, cause they push people out the cur, out in the street. But this is gonna be in an alley.
That's in an alley, but is that alley used? I mean, is it, it's an alley.
It's an open alley right now. They would have to go through the proper channels to get the sidewalk cafe.
Okay.
For that. They would have to get the title holder of this property to sign off on that. And they have indicated they've, the applicant's talked with the owner of this property and that property owner does appear to be, I'm willing to consent to that. But when the police have had, had concerns, it's been when those patios caused the sidewalk to be so narrow that it's forcing people to walk into the street. So that wouldn't be applicable here.
Questions? Thanks, Bert. App can represent the applicant?
Members of the board, I'm Adam Bandike with the Brown Winnick Law Firm, 666 Grand Avenue, Suite 2000, Des Moines, Iowa. I represent Norris Partners, which is made up of Tim Ripma, Jeremy Corrite, who are here today with me in Polk County, who's not here. And then also with here today is the, our prospective tenant, which is Tonic, Scott Anderson. As Bert said, we're asking for a special use permit to put in a tavern. The project, you know, we're excited about this project. They, our client, my client just bought this September 5th, I think, when we closed on it. So it's a new building. And you're probably aware of the building. It's the old Judge Roy Beans building. Uh, it's been vacant since April of 2008 is when they, was Judge Roy Beans left. So it's kind of dilapidated, looks bad. We're excited about getting in there and rehabbing the building and making it look nice. The, uh, the way that the building appears right now is clearly just a vacant building with the sign on it that says for sale, I believe. One of the things that we're doing, our plans with it is we're, obviously as discussed, we're, we want to put a tavern in the first floor of the building. Second floor of the building will be office use. But we're planning on spending a little over a million dollars to rehab this building. Hopefully we'll stay on that budget. But the, the building is, does qualify for historic preservation credits, which we are pursuing. And as part of that, obviously, as a part of our rehabilitation, we have to, you know, comply with, with that preservation, you know? And one of the things I want to point out to, to the board is if we receive those credits, not only do we have to, you know, construct the building in such a way to preserve that historic preservation, but we also have to own the building for five years. So I just want to point out, these are local gentlemen that own the building. You know, we, we plan on being around and, and obviously being a good landlord for, of course, at least five years because we have to. I'm gonna have Tim come up and he, he has actually brought some pictures just to kind of show you an idea of what we're planning on doing to the building real briefly. Let's see if I can. And I'll let him describe that to you and then I'll have a couple more comments after he shows you that.
Members of the board, thank you for the opportunity. Again, Tim Ripma, managing member of Norris Partners LLC. I'm just gonna give you a quick presentation. Can I give you?
Tim, I need your address too.
Thank you. 422 East Locust Street, Des Moines, Iowa, 50309. Anyway, I'm, I'm going to give you a, a quick presentation, overview of, of the project. We, as you can see, the historical image of the property, we do plan to redevelop 210 Court Avenue. Historically, we were working with the State Historical Preservation Office and the National Park Service to meet all their standards and their approval. As Adam indicated, that does require us to own the property for a minimum of five years. We're, we're local guys. We plan to be here for a lot longer than that. Total project cost currently is a $1.2 million project. It's a significant project for a very small building. It's been very challenging. The current assessed value of this property is $227,000. Flip real fast. You can indicate current storefront and the west side of the building. The building is in very rough shape. Here is an interior shot of the building. You can see it's pigeons, raccoons. Found a family of bunnies actually living in this, which I've never had to deal with. It's new to me. Another image.
Don't know what they be.
Of the interior. Again, most of the windows are boarded up. And this building has been vacant April, since April 2008. So it's been kind of an eyesore, I believe, for the city. Our proposed storefront, as Adam also men- mentioned, first floor tavern, second floor office. Office use only. This would not be any addition, any additional bar or anything like that. Both, both units will have separate private entrances, as you can kind of see up here, to its historical standards. Office here, or the, and the tavern used there. All windows refurbished, all brand-new windows. The whole building gets tuck pointed. As Bert indicated also, kind of first floor layout, there will be access, a four-foot access from kind of back of the current alley that runs through here. This alley currently dead ends, so we'll get, there will still be pedestrian access. A car won't be able to go through there, but residential or pedestrians will. We are working with the city, all the proper channels to vacate the alley and then to lease this, this patio from the city of Des Moines. So we are going through all proper channels and city, far as I understand it, is very supportive, is supportive of this at this time. Again, thank you for the opportunity. I'm gonna turn it back over to Adam.
I just have a couple more comments and then I'll, we'll certainly ask your, answer your questions. As, as I, as disclosed, our proposed tenant is Tonic, which if you're familiar with Tonic, they're, they have a establishment in West Glen, out in West Des Moines. Tonic enjoys a pretty good reputation here in town. They've been in West Glen since West Glen existed. They were one of the first tenants out there. So I think the, I believe, 2005. So nearly 10 years. The owners of Tonic also have other establishments around town, Saints, Mavericks, Beaver Del Tap. They, they're good at what they do and they, they enjoy a good reputation around town. This isn't their first bar or, you know, tavern that they put in. So they run a pretty good, pretty good establishment. Tonic's, there was some concern I, from staff regarding some of the, you know, concentration of bars downtown. While I, I'm not sure I agree with their analysis on that, I, I do want to point out that Tonic is a little bit different type of, of establishment. We're really targeting an older crowd. I call it the Civic Center crowd, you know, the people that, the type of atmosphere, the type of drinks that they sell there. And if you go out to Tonic in West Glen, I think you can verify this, it's, it's not your 50 cent beer night, you know? We're, we're looking for.
Where's 50 cent beer night?
Well, hey.
I'm going. Make sure that's in the record, Mel.
I'm thinking that was a long time ago, but you know, and, and I think, and we can verify that, I think, if you go out and, and check out there, you know, it's, it's definitely. What we'd like to see is more of the adults that work downtown.
Sure.
Have a place to go. Right now, they really don't. I, I haven't been on Court Avenue for many years, but my understanding is it's a very young crowd. Fine, good for them, but we'd like to have an establishment maybe for somebody like myself, for example, to go to and not feel like a fish out of water. Now, we can't prevent younger kids coming in there, obviously. But that's kind of what we're targeting and, and so just kind of give you an idea, that's the atmosphere we're going for. And we'd love to keep business downtown. You know, a lot of people, a lot of business, a lot of people work in downtown Des Moines and they'd go out to the suburbs for, you know, whatever in the evening. So.
Right.
You know, that's, that's our target goal at least. We think there's a market for it and that's why they want to sign a lease with us. So. And I, I just want to address real quick the staff report. I read through the staff report. They had some concerns mainly with congestion and a police report. This is an entertainment district. Yeah, there's gonna be police calls down in entertainment district. I, I looked at the police report and honestly, while there's 600 and some incidences, half of those are, from what I can tell, minor traffic issues. You know, I, I'm not gonna debate what all that means, but the, my point is, is that, yeah, of course, when you have a large concentration of people, you're gonna have more police down there. Police are gonna write more tickets and arrest more people. That's just the way it is. We don't think we're gonna add to that. I don't know that, we really feel that we're not necessarily gonna attract more people to downtown. We just may disperse it to one more bar. Now, we'd like to attract, as I said, a different crowd, but I don't know that we're gonna actually increase the number of people in the area on any given Saturday night, especially at 2:00 AM. And so we, we're gonna work with the, obviously within the rules to make sure that, you know, we're not violating or creating a nuisance and just like the other bars down there.
Right.
So the congestion, you know, nobody said a crystal ball what's gonna happen with congestion, people coming out of the bars, but I don't feel we're gonna increase the problem as it is now, if it is a problem. You know, we want to have an entertainment district. People want to go to have fun. You're gonna have problems here and there, but we think that our bar is a little bit more upscale and is gonna avoid some of the problems that some of the other ones may experience. So. That being said, also, the, the staff brought up some concerns, at least in their staff report, about, you know, whether or not we're sufficiently isolated or separated from the residents around there. The only residence that's really, that would be close to us is to our south. In fact, we're talking, this is our building here. This is the apartment complex right here. I think that would be the closest residence. We're, I, from what I can tell, this is the Polk County building. You know, we have a building in between us and the nearest residence and a parking lot. And this is, you know, apartment complex. They're not condos. In that same regard, recently, the Board of Adjustment back in May, over here, which used to be Buzzard Billy's, granted the same application that we have in front of you right now for essentially the same thing. And right next, even closer, you have condos in that area and staff supported that. So I'm not sure what the discrepancy is there. I think we actually are more isolated than that to the one that you recently granted for the conditional use. The, I think part of the reason people buy condos or live also downtown is they want to be near the entertainment district so they can walk home, you know? So I think we had letters of support. I don't think we had any negative, we didn't have any negative comments from the neighbors. So that being said, I, I think we're okay on that, in that regard. And I kind of want to lastly, I think I, I sent these to Bert yesterday.
Give me about one minute to wrap up. I gave you 15. I kind of.
I know, it's all right. Bert received two letters yesterday. I believe you guys received those. We have the support of the, of the Downtown Community Alliance, as you, as you saw. And then our neighbor, which was actually Sporaco, supports it. I, I will get into the, the 2011 study that the alliance did, because clearly they support us in what we're doing right now with that letter. So I think that, that kind of speaks for itself. And lastly, any criteria that, any additional conditions that needed to be added, we certainly will listen to them. And we want to make this work and we really appreciate your support. We'll take questions at this time. Thanks.
I'm just curious, are you selling food or is it just strictly drinks and a tavern?
Uh, yeah, actually I, I forgot. We, we are, we are offering a full menu. What we do, we're not, we're not making the food there, which is the reason for the, the, the application, but Sporaco and Legends, we will have their menus and that will be served at our establishment.
And Adam, tell, tell me about the patio. What, what would be proposed out there? Do you want to have music, live band, jamming away? What's?
Uh, we will be in compliance with whatever the, the city ordinance, what I call it, the sound ordinance is. That is not.
Okay.
I don't think, I may want to have Scott come up. He's the.
Because what I'm curious, you know, depending on what you want to do, you'd be kind of mating up to the other patio next door. And what do they do on their patio or what?
Sure.
What have they been allowed to do?
Yeah, understood. I'll, I'll let him answer that.
Okay, sure.
Chair, board members, Scott Anderson, Riley Drive Entertainment, 5535 Mills Civic Parkway, West Des Moines. We're really excited about this opportunity because where some people see too many bars, we see a void. I don't know if you've had, been fortunate enough, hopefully fortunate enough to have been at Tonic before, but we really go after a different market. The goal here is not to take people from other bars on Court Avenue. I mean, if that's the reason we're doing this, there's no point in doing this. The goal is to bring a different kind of clientele to Court Avenue. We think there's a lot of older crowd that frankly wants somewhere to go downtown and right now they don't have that. Frankly, I don't know what Legends does on their patio, but no, we do not. Tonic's not known for live music. Tonic is not known for bands. That's not what we do. What I envision on the patio is two speakers with normal music. I mean, our customers, when they come in, in the bar, they want to talk. I mean, they're, they're like us. You go out, you want to have a conversation with the people. You, you want to have a conversation with the people you're with. If you go in Tonic, I mean, we haven't had a band in eight years at Tonic in West Des Moines. We may have had two bands. It was a special, something special occasion, but that's the short answer.
And, and I know where the old Buzzard Billy's was, whoever it is that's in there now, we gave some recent approvals for their patio. And I think we were pretty conservative on what we allowed them to do. If we were inclined to do this, I'd probably want to be the same way.
Well, it was found right behind there.
True.
You just got a parking lot behind.
Well, that's, that's true too. We might have to take that into account. And another question I have on, you're after historic preservation tax credits. So the way I understand it, you have to have kind of your plan approved on how you'd preserve this or restore that. You actually have to do all the work. Then SHPO would have to certify you've complied with it. Then you get your tax credit certificate. Is that right?
I'll, I'll let Tim respond to that.
Yes.
Okay, good. Cause, cause what I'm getting at here is I wouldn't want to say, yeah, well, you can go ahead and do this. And then SHPO says, no, we don't like your plan. We're not giving you the tax credit. And then you just slam a crappy bar in there.
I can, I can tell you real fast, part one, three parts.
Right.
Part one's been approved. Part two at the SHPO level, state level's been approved.
Okay.
National Park Service has until October 10th to approve.
Okay. And I might have to ask staff this, but if we wanted a condition that you've got to move forward, get your historic tax credit, restore or remodel in accordance with, you know, what you've shown there, then you get your occupancy permit. And if at that stage you haven't done that, then maybe this conditional use would go away. If, if we're inclined to go that route. I like the idea of restoring that building. I really think that's great.
And I, I think, I think we're fine with that. Obviously, our intention is to move forward. So if, if that doesn't go through, then.
Right. And if we've got the, again, depending on, you know, if we'd have the legality to put that in as a condition, that we'd approve it if it's in substantial conformance with what was shown here and the applicant's testimony that they'll be doing this with historic tax credit eligibility and completion. Can we do that? Larry?
I think you could. And the thing is, there might still be a question about whether.
And the thing is, there might still be a question about whether you get the tax credits or not, but I think maybe the condition is that, in fact, gets restored to that level, whatever that standard is. And I know Tim and Jake, is there a define, is there like a National Park Service standard or a SHPO standard or something that, or can?
There is, but he's been through the first part of it, which is the SHPO review. So there's been a technical review.
Okay, so maybe in accordance with the plan submitted to the, to the SHPO.
Which is what we have in front of us, is the way I understand it.
Okay.
Good with that, then. No?
And I think the key to the points on the number of bars, it really comes down to who's operating them at the end of the day. Granted, a certain number of people has an impact, but there's already a lot of people. So what we need are more quality operators. I think I would support the plan.
And 600, 600 and some things in the last year, average it out, 365 days a year, that's less than two a day on average. So I'm guessing most of those are a few Friday and Saturday night.
Yeah, I mean, like I said earlier, you're going to have your problems, and we're not denying that, but.
Sure, sure. We kind of understand that.
I'm not sure that that was anything that stood out as being too severe, in my opinion.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else here to speak in support? Anybody here to speak in opposition? Any last questions for staff? Very none. We'll close the public portion, good board decision then.
Well, I would just like to comment. I understand staff's concerns, but I don't see a nail place going in here or a hair salon going in here. It's just really an entertainment district. That's what Court Avenue is. And I was down there recently, and I felt like a complete fish out of water with my gray hair, because the only thing around me were kids who should have, who could have been my kids, and it was just rather awkward. And I was thinking, wow, there is no place for somebody like me to really go and feel comfortable. So I'm looking forward to having an establishment that I can go to.
Be comfortable in?
Be comfortable in.
So.
Mr. Chair, I would move the proposal as submitted.
I'll second it.
Folks, I want to note that you're granting the variance then, so as submitted, okay.
And if the motions, you know, as submitted, that includes the idea that they develop it like they've proposed in the drawings and the tax credit.
Historical preservation.
And we don't need to add anything more to that to be comfortable with it.
The board might move this way, so I had prepared.
You are so good.
Bert, you don't have to have a poker face. You can kind of tell us a little bit. Now, if you decide to do this.
That's okay, Bert. I, I, you just play ball the way you have been.
That was good.
I didn't include a condition on requiring the building to be restored, though, so you might want to have that.
You did not, you say. All right. Can you have some language? Have we had language like that, or can we put something there?
Other than condition number two are the same conditions that you put on 100 Court Center back in May, which the applicant had referenced. I guess, just to clarify, that, in that instance, that bar was the only one on that block face, which was why staff was more supportive of that one. We felt that that was actually diluting or pulling people away from the highly concentrated Third, Fourth Street area of Court Avenue. So that was a rationale for, I'm supporting the 100 Court. But these are the same conditions that were put on that, other than they didn't have number two because the patio wasn't within right of way.
And is there something there about noise? I was just quickly looking.
Yeah.
Was there?
Number four.
Have you guys had a chance to look at these before?
Probably not.
I know.
Do you have a copy?
Man, we're going to actually make a quick.
I did, and I mean, I've seen the way you granted it in May 22nd, and so there was 10 criteria. Looks like they added one.
Which was the number two, isn't it?
Which is number two because of the outdoor patio. But other than that, and we told staff we would, we're fine with these.
Okay. I want to make sure. Okay.
I mean, may I just say something? The, I mean, by, I just want to make sure we don't follow the intent of what you're after. The, by offering foods, we're planning on offering food from the two local businesses available on premises all time. That's correct.
That's a win-win.
Yeah. You hit the home run on that.
And I would argue, as patios are done well, you want more concentration, not spreading them out.
Absolutely. Yeah, I agree with you there, Jake. Okay, so now do you want to mend your thing to follow staff's?
I'll take Bert's friendly amendment.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six to nothing, and I think Cindy and I on this one. Mel, you're a little younger yet, you don't want to.
I love going to Court Avenue and looking around.
All right, so then the three of us will be down there. Actually, we all.
What? All the businesses, all the excitement? What are you, oh.
Okay, we got to.
She expected.
Did everybody get a chance to look at the minutes from the last meeting? I need somebody to give a motion, accept the board minutes.
I'll make a motion, accept board minutes.
Second. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. I think everybody was here. Motion carries six to nothing.
Maybe about the board.
Meeting's adjourned.
I will not be here next month.
That's right. Bert, you hear that?